Good evening. Okay, we're starting this next hearing, the Mayor and City Council Resolution 25-0075. And again, this is in effect, uh, this bill will be in effect beginning July 1, 2025, through June 30th, 2026. Um, I am Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, just kind of filling in for a bit for, um, Chair McCray had an important meeting and she will be returning. Uh, so we're gonna go ahead and, um, start with, um, Dr. Santalisa's with your presentation, and then we'll continue.
Thank you, Vice President Middleton. Uh, good evening, um, to, um, the absent Chair McCray and the full council. Um, again, thank you so much for this opportunity to be with you this evening. Um, before we get started, I'm going to turn it over to, before I get started, I'm gonna turn it over to Board Chair Sally to provide welcoming remarks before I begin. Chair Sally?
Here we go. Thank you so much. Um, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. Um, thank each and every one of you for the opportunity for Baltimore City Public Schools to be here. So first of all, um, Council President Cohen, um, as well as Vice Chair Middleton, we do appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm Robert Sally. I serve as the Chair of the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners. Um, I'm also joined by our Vice Chair, uh, this evening, and there will be several other board members who will come in as well. The CEO and CFO will go into more details about the budget, but as you're aware, um, there are many changes that we're facing here in Baltimore City Public Schools. But I want everyone to hear that Baltimore City Schools is fiscally sound and strong despite the uncertainties that surround us. The Board has been conscientious in working with the CEO to ensure that the school system maintains a healthy and balanced budget to support all of our academic programs and our students. Tonight's budget will reflect our continued commitment as a Board towards the mission of providing quality education that focuses on each and every one of our students in Baltimore City Public Schools and advancing students with the life skills and academic foundation needed to contribute to our changing society. The Council will see in our presentation that we are providing the vast majority of our funds-
Can you get just a little closer?
Sure, sure. Is that better?
Yes.
Um, the Council will see in our presentation that we're providing the vast majority of our funds directly to our schools, so about 88% will go directly to the school level. Additionally, each school shows a year-over-year increase from fiscal year '25, but there is greater fiscal pressure on our school budgets because of higher costs. Is that better?
Um, we're checking. They're saying some people-
Got it.
They're checking to see some people online can't hear.
Can I hear? Okay.
So, hold that thought for one minute or less.
Okay. So let me just, um, reiterate that last point. So, you know, additionally, each year shows a year-over-year increase, uh, from our fiscal year '25, but there's greater financial pressure on our school budgets because of higher costs, greater needs, and shifting our, surrounding our ESSR funding back to our schools. You should also know that the system was well-prepared for the end of ESSR, uh, but we could have never forecasted some of the changes that it came from the federal landscape. The CEO and the CFO will go into more details about the latest court actions and the State Department of Education guidance that we believe will hopefully resolve some of these issues. I want to point out that we have allocated funding in the budget to address mental health, accelerating achievement in literacy and math, restorative practices, and more outlets for our students, just to name a few. Even with the federal uncertainty, we'll continue to provide tutoring services, summer learning opportunities, and more, as well as other academic achievements for our students. The budget before you clearly outlines the Board's priorities based on the available funding, but as you know, even with the additional dollars from the Blueprint for Maryland's Future and the additional city dollars over the next 10 years, it's not everything that we know our children deserve and need in Baltimore City. I want to thank you again for allowing me, uh, to have these few comments. I'd like to invite up Vice Chair Parker to provide just a couple of details on our CEO transition.
Good evening, um, Madam Vice Chair, and, I'm sorry, Madam Vice City Council President, Mr. Council President and esteemed Council, um, thank you for having us here today. I wanted to talk a little bit about the CEO search. So, we are-
Just say your name again.
Yes, Vice Chair Parker, Ashia Parker. So, we are here celebrating the achievements of Dr. Santalisa's and her team, um, but the, the Board also is very, um, excited about the upcoming CEO search. So, up to now, we have named a search firm, Alma Advisory Services. They have lots of experience in this type of search for a large district. They, what really attracted us to them is that they have managed stakeholder engagement, which is what we're looking forward to doing here in Baltimore, to make sure that all voices are heard and that we have the voice of the community as we choose the next CEO. And more importantly, we just want to signal to the Council that the Board is looking forward to a transparent process and that we are open to any questions, concerns, suggestions, and input. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair and Vice Chair, and now I'm back this, for this evening's, uh, main agenda, which is to go through the FY '26 operating budget. Uh, before we get started, um, I would just like to say that joining me tonight here is a full complement of the City Schools team. First, I did see, um, additional Commissioner Esposito, um, has joined us. Where were you? Okay, I thought I saw you in the camera. Commissioner Esposito has also joined us. We have Allison Perkins Cohen, our Chief of Staff, Dr. Joan DeBrowski, our Chief Academic Officer, uh, Dr. Stacy Plastose, our Chief of Schools, um, Emily Nielsen, our Chief Human Capital Officer, Dr. Lynette Washington, our Chief Operating Officer, um, Tina Haig-Hubbard, our Chief of Communications, Engagement and Enrollment. Uh, I believe, has Chief Shorter joined us? Not yet. Chief Shorter is on his way. Um, and then we have Sonia Goodwin, who's our Executive Director for Whole Child Services and Supports, um, and our Chief Financial Officer, Doherty, is, um, out currently on medical leave, um, but as is his practice, he has an incredibly strong team, so Courtney Desabey and Sandy Jacobs are here representing our finance office this evening. We also have Dr. Taysha Swinton-Buck and Dr. Jenny Wu here, and we are also joined this evening by Melissa Broome and Dewanis Dorrett, representing our City Schools Legislative Team. With that said, um, we will now dive right in. Very good. And I think that we, the first thing that I would say is that we really are, um, proud to share the budget for FY '26, uh, that really does, um, focus in on our key investments. Um, this FY '26, sorry, this FY '26, uh, budget reflects an anticipated 7% increase in blueprint funding, and this is primarily dedicated to sustaining major investments and substantial salary increases. So when we are talking about a 7% in, increase, it's important for the Council and the public to know, um, that the overwhelming majority of that increase is going in these two areas. Um, and it's really important as we continue to both recruit and retain, um, our, uh, excuse me, our very team members. Now, um, at a time of uncertainty, um, really sustainability is the key, given the national and state funding landscape, um, the impact of recent federal actions. I know that City Council has been, uh, very active in tracking what's going on federally, um, and the impact, um, you all know, many of you reached out when the U.S. Department of Education notified states and districts in March that they were ending the availability of remaining pandemic relief funds. Um, for city schools, this would have meant $43, $48 million, and already expended or encumbered funds that we had been approved for would not have been reimbursed by the federal government. Um, I'm happy to say today that in response to a suit, uh, brought by Maryland and other states, the U.S. District Court did issue a preliminary injunction requiring the U.S. Education Department to continue reimbursing these funds pending further consideration of the litigation. Uh, this is significant, um, for those of us here in Baltimore City, because it has meant that MSDE has, in fact, resumed reimbursement in anticipation of the U.S. Department of Education complying with court orders. So, to date, City Schools has received $38.1 million of that initial amount, $48 million, um, and has submitted an additional $3.5 million for reimbursement. So, this is, um, some good news in that area. Um, I will also say, um, that at this particular time, um, we also, um, while we are thrilled about this pandemic funding, um, rescission, um, it's also, uh, not kind of lost on us the need to be prudent, given both the state and federal national landscape. Um, so I do want to draw attention, um, to the fact that, um, the state of Maryland has enacted economic hardship triggers that would reopen, um, its FY '26 budget if reductions in revenue resulting from any federal actions reach a certain threshold. In the event that this would be the case, then City Schools would also, uh, need to reopen our budget if there are impacts to, uh, current funding streams. So with that as context, I think in this slide, I don't necessarily have to read it to you, but you'll see here kind of four major pieces. First, this budget is aligned, um, with our Board goals. The Board, um, has voted to pass this budget, um, after, after guidance and, and direction in key areas. Um, we remain committed, um, guided by our Portrait of a Graduate strategic plan, and this budget reflects, um, some of our key priorities, as well as feedback from our community. By way of reminder, um, to Council members, um, here are some key areas in Portrait of the Graduate. We spent time over the course of a year-plus, um, really going out and doing listening from families, from students, from other community members, and you'll see the expansion, um, of some of our original areas, um, into, um, basically the answers to the question that we ask these stakeholder groups, and that is, what should a graduate from Baltimore City Schools be able to do? What should a graduate look like? And so this portrait really is one of the driving, um, forces behind the budget. You'll also see, um, and again, I often, um, quote, uh, one of my early pastors who said, "If you want to see someone's priorities, you look at where their checkbook is." And so what we are presenting here, um, to City Council this evening is our FY '26 budget priorities. You will see them here, um, in the area of continued acceleration. Again, we have had growth, we'll talk about some of that, but we are not under any delusion that we are finished, and so that acceleration in literacy and math achievement is a priority, as well as, um, this Council for, I mean, more than the 10 years I've been in this role, um, has been very focused on how we expand college and career readiness through secondary success and innovation. Um, I want to thank, um, the Council President for his, um, work with the Mayor and really bringing, um, our CTE programming, um, to what I call kind of a perfect positive storm in time, where we are aligned across city agencies, across city schools, and across the state. You will see that that continues to remain a priority here. Of course, attendance and dropout re-engagement, where many of this Council's members have been focused and have been partners, as well as the ongoing need that we continue to hear from our young people in just about every forum, which is supporting their mental health. On the next page, you'll see some of our community feedback, um, uh, action, some of what we did to reach out, to receive, um, viewpoints, feedback, input from our community, um, as well. So with that, um, we will move into the funding considerations for this year's budget. Um, this slide, I think, continues to be important, um, because you'll see that our FY '26 revenue, uh, going into this year is $1.87 billion, which includes general, special, and enterprise funds. This pie chart, um, demonstrates, uh, what we have all come to know, that the overwhelming majority of, uh, City Schools revenue does come, uh, within the general fund, but you'll see, uh, where these other two funds also comprise our overall budget. If we move into the overview of general funds, you'll see that the $1.5 billion of the general funds, um, comes from three main sources of revenue. Uh, just by way of reminder, you'll also see the comparison between FY '25, our current fiscal year, and FY '26 divided in these main areas, uh, the overwhelming majority of which comes from the state of Maryland, um, so that, uh, you'll see the FY '25 to FY '26, you will see that, um, that increase that I referenced earlier. You'll also see, uh, the City of Baltimore, um, portion has also increased for this school year, and you'll see the breakdown, um, that also includes the TSI grant. And then there are other sources, and these other sources, um, are comprised of federal grants such as E-Rate and investment earning. Um, our funded enrollment, uh, we're very pleased this year to say that our funded enrollment for FY '26 reflects our enrollment increase, which is good news for City Schools and our city. Um, we've increased by just over 1,000 students, um, even after years of, um, declining, uh, population within the city and some of our, um, are some of our decreases in flat rates of, uh, of, of enrollment. So we're, we're very happy about that, and it's showing in this year's budget. Now, I do want to remind, um, this body, because again, the Council, um, played a really, um, important role in supporting, uh, excuse me, in supporting the blueprint, um, as we were advocating, and I think one of the things that we need to keep in mind, and that often, um, we need to even remind just the general public, is that, that the blueprint is designed to fund some schools at higher levels than others. That is by design, right? And it's by design because, um, we know that there was an increased focus on concentrations of poverty within schools, and that the blueprint for, the blueprint basically says that each school's funding is driven by the demographics, the characteristics of the students that they served. So for the state of Maryland, that's significant in that, um, what a number of our schools, and I'm sure some within Council members' districts, depending on the characteristics of the students that that school serves, it will change, um, the funding for that particular school. So I think it's important, um, to understand that there are 12 different, um, funding streams, separate funding streams. It's not as if they all kind of land in one big golden pot, um, of money. They come through different funding streams that each have different requirements, um, connected to them. Now, when we're looking at where we are in blueprint funding, um, I think it's important that fiscal year '26 marks the fourth year of blueprint funding. Now, the Governor's Budget Proposal initially included significant funds to found, uh, cuts, excuse me, um, to foundation, compensatory education, multilingual, uh, funding. I really want to thank this Council for your advocacy, um, because your advocacy, um, along with others, those cuts were restored, which is very significant in the budget that you are seeing this evening. Um, however, school allocations and other aspects of that budget, um, really are based on the state's proposed budget. But again, it is important to know that every school in Baltimore City did receive an allocation increase in fiscal year '26. So despite that variability, we made sure that every school, whether it's traditional or charter, right, whether it is a school in North Baltimore or Southwest Baltimore, we made sure that every school received some increase this fiscal year. Now, I think when we're talking about sustainability, um, and I say this, um, as someone who, um, is on the runway, uh, towards my, um, towards the end of my term, um, I want to emphasize here this evening, um, for the Council, that the blueprint dollars are not guaranteed. Um, this blueprint bill, um, that passed in April does include cuts to foundation funding for fiscal year '27 and '28. So I don't want us to take for granted, um, because I will continue to be a citizen of Baltimore, and I think as citizens, um, as well as leaders, we need to not, um, assume that the level of funding that we have now is going to remain, and it is going to still require this Council's advocacy similar to this year, um, as we move into the out-years of the blueprint funding. Further, just to provide, I won't read the whole slide to you, but I think it's important, um, again, as you hear of different shifts in schools' fundings, um, that again, as I noted, every school got year-over-year, um, per pupil increase, but the level of that increase, you'll see here, um, was really impacted by three major factors. Um, we've already talked about the blueprint design, um, but also the end of ESSR. So with that final, um, expiration of COVID relief funds, um, some school-based costs are moving back to school budgets. So, one of the things that we knew, um, that I said last year in this chamber and the, I think, two years before, is we knew that when ESSR dollars came to an end, some of what those ESSR dollars funded would also come to an end. Um, and so some of what schools are experiencing is what happens when grant dollars that are temporary dollars actually expire, and that's having an impact this year. The other piece is increasing position costs, and it's one of the reasons that I opened with the fact that even with the 7% increase, we know that a large portion of that went to make sure that our team, our staff, um, had, um, increases this year. So the large portion of our increase, uh, means that that cost, um, uh, took up, and I think willingly, but it did take up a large portion of that 7% increase. Now, when we move into the blueprint funding categories for fiscal year '26, um, you will see that these categories include both state and city funds. I just think it's important, um, for both the Council as well as the public, um, to see that the funding amounts are based on the Governor's, um, proposed budget, um, and now past budget. Um, but you'll see the differences in each of the funding sources, um, between fiscal year '25 and '26. Again, I think it's a good reference point for the Council as we track, um, where those categories are and where funding is. Now, when we move into some of those categories, again, I want to thank, um, this Council for understanding the vital and critical role of concentrations of poverty dollars, um, affectionately shortchanged, uh, uh, short-named, um, our CPG grant, which really does include supports for core academic programming. Uh, Baltimore City has, um, the largest concentration of poverty in the state. You'll remember that the blueprint, um, drafting said that concentration of poverty matters, and so this grant is particularly important for school funding in Baltimore City. And I do think that, right here, and I'll just pick out some of these activities, things like our Community Schools Coordinators, the attendance positions that are contributing to our year-over-year increases in attendance, the Fine Arts Program, so the school musicals that we're hearing about, um, the increases in, um, arts teachers that have grown significantly since I first sat at the, or stood at this podium as CEO. So, the entire CPG for, uh, fiscal year '26 is $166 million. Again, I want to thank, um, the Council, um, the Mayor as well, who really honed in on the importance of this CPG grant. It's essential to a lot of the services, the activities, the engagement, the increased, um, supports at schools. Much of that is tied to this CPG grant. Um, the next slide just says in more details, um, the end of ESSR, some of what I, um, I referenced earlier. The only thing I would repeat, um, or that I would draw out so as not to repeat, is the fact that, um, this Council should be very proud, um, that our school district, Baltimore City School District, is not facing what a lot of other districts are. We planned for this off-ramp. We planned, we resisted the temptation to add permanent positions when we knew that the dollars were not permanent. And so because of that, um, Baltimore City is noted, not only within Maryland, but across the country, as being an example of an urban school district that has spent this money well. We have close to, I won't say the percentage, but we are well over the 18% of ESSR dollars that were spent nationally on academics. We are at least double, or double that amount, probably close to what, 40%? So between 40 and 50% of our ESSR dollars actually went to the kind of academic support programming, um, that supported our young people coming out of the pandemic and positioned us well. So you should feel proud as a Council, um, that you are, that we are not in the news, uh, for unspent dollars or poorly spent dollars. And I want to thank our team, um, both centrally and at schools, for that. Now, in terms of the FY, uh, '26 general fund, uh, distribution, we include this pie chart every year as a way of demonstrating that 88% of the general fund budget is either in schools or budgeted on behalf of schools. And you, many of you will remember that when I entered as CEO, one of the popular incorrect refrains was that, uh, Baltimore City was bloated centrally. Um, once we produced this slide, somehow that narrative, um, we did not hear it, um, any longer. And that's because if you look here, what you'll see is that, um, the overwhelming majority of this, 73%, is in principal controlled budgets. You will see that the other pie, pieces of the pie chart, um, are also in things that actually support, um, schools that are budgeted centrally, and the next slide gives a little more detail as to what those are. So things like transportation, um, things like home and hospital, um, and school police, athletics, um, and, and other pieces here show you what we mean when we say, um, the school support that's budgeted centrally. Next slide. As a result of this, and frankly, the hard work of principals, teachers, um, school-based workers, as well as our central office staff, many of whom are led by the people that you see here tonight, um, I am proud to say that, no, we have not arrived. We have not ended the need, um, to continue to push forward, to continue to accelerate our progress. Um, but you should know that City Schools students have the second-largest growth in reading nationally since 2022 among large urban school districts, and that is even post the pandemic. You should also know, that City Schools is one of five large urban school districts that are performing better in reading now than before the pandemic. Again, are we finished? Are we where we want to be? No, but we certainly are not where we were before. City Schools kindergarten readiness is its highest in nine years. The blueprint passage has resulted in significant increases in the arts. This Council, our families told us that arts was important, we had an arts plan, we worked with the arts community, and I'm proud to say that when, um, my first, uh, first, second full year here, we only had 174 full-time arts teachers. Today, um, for the 24-25 school year, we have 309, and we're more than happy to tell you what it will be this year as well. That, those are tangible increases that are impacting the lives of young people. The other piece that I'm proud of, this is the academic mission in me and a former GNT teacher, I am very proud that our team can now say, because of the work of our teachers, because of the work, um, of our schools' office, our academic office, that the number of Black and African-American students enrolled in AP, in an AP class and sat for that AP exam increased from 62% and 90%. The number for Hispanic, uh, students increased from 57% in 2021 to 91%. That means that in 2024, we have more African-American and Latino students- students enrolled in an AP course than ever before in Baltimore City public schools. So finally, what I believe that means is that investments in the things that you all know, you told us, our families told us, has resulted in part in an increase in enrollment for city schools. We also, this year, have had the smallest number of African-American middle-class families who have left the system. In other years, that has been close to three hundred or more families, this year it was forty. And a lot of that significant decline, we believe and what we have heard, is connected to the fact that all families are seeing more enrichment at our schools, more offerings at our schools, and frankly, more accomplishments for our young people. One that I'd like to highlight in the next slide, and I think we have an alum of Commodore John Rogers on our city council, Commodore John Rogers is, uh, won the world championship in robotics. Now, that's not just they won for Baltimore City, that's not just they won for the state of Maryland, they competed against four hundred teams from a hundred and nine countries, and this is the first time a Baltimore City Public Schools team has won a judged award at a world championship. Those are our young people, this is our community, this is our city, and these are our kids showing what they can do. Now, in terms of investment highlights, I will go quickly because I don't want to get the hook from Madam Vice Chair, Vice President, sorry, don't want to get, don't want to get the hook. A couple of highlights, some of which I have already noted, but you'll see some of our investments in foundational math and literacy, we're continuing, as you see here, in our instructional materials and our coaching. Baltimore City was one of the few school districts, not only in Maryland, but frankly, among urban districts, that did not have this kind of coaching for teachers. That is no longer the case. You'll also see that we are building on the personalized learning and tutoring that we began building up during the pandemic. So again, academics continues to be on the forefront, and academics also means a well-rounded education. You can see here, some of what I've referenced already in terms of the arts, and gifted in advanced learning, that is now in many more zip codes across the city. It used to be that it was only in one or two zip codes, now across the city, including in Freddie Gray's old neighborhood. There are now advanced mathematics that is available for young people who live where he lived. So you'll see here, some of those highlights there, including our Judy Center expansion. You'll also see our secondary success and innovation on this, the post-secondary planning and success, the, a lot of the career coaching, work-based learning and CTE expansion, on track to graduate. Again, we heard from families, we looked at our data, we heard from this council, our graduation rate is not fully where we want it to be yet, but again, it is not where it was. And some of the investment that you see here is what is leading to that increase, earlier identification of young people, as well as the guidance along the way. You'll see in our wholeness growth and enrichment, again, our re-engagement center, which has had a lot of interest, as well as positive press, as well as outside support, because we are going and finding young people who had been disengaged, frankly, through a number of life challenges, and that is adding even to the number of young people graduating. I also want to thank the mayor for his support of athletics. Yes, three million for high schools, but also the one-point-two million you see here for middle schools. I remember standing in this chamber, and one member, can't remember who, that's probably very convenient, asked me about what our crime-fighting strategy was for city schools. And at that time, I will say what I said then, and I will say now. As a former middle school teacher, at one of the crucial points of brain development, you want young people to be engaged in activities that they will then remember and be engaged in as adults. If they are popping hubcaps, if they are being recruited by gang members, if they have nothing else to do, that is what will show up when they are nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. But if, like our now probably fifteen teams of girls cross-country, they actually have something to do that is productive, that promotes teamwork, that actually engages them in being comfortable with their bodies, and gives them opportunities for leadership, like middle school athletics, then it is an investment well worth making. I also know members of this, this council have rightly been focused on where we are with the climate and culture of our school. You'll see here of our schools, you'll see here the investment in wholeness specialist, school police, Chief Shorter has come aboard and hit the ground running, and one of his first priorities was making sure that we had open positions that were filled so that schools had the coverage they needed. You'll see a deeper focus on attendance. We know, we believe here in city schools, that a lot of what we're seeing in the increase in attendance is adding back what a lot of other school districts had, and what a lot of other school districts had that we did not have were folks focused, positions focused specifically on attendance. And we're seeing that the addition of these forty-nine attendance positions, which is climbing every year, is helping us to get to that place. We continue to focus on mental health, on expanded behavioral health services, homeless services, meals, and again, I will just add seventy-one million dollars in food and nutrition services. This is not all covered by federal dollars. So some of our general fund is going to support our young people in Baltimore City eating and making sure that they have a place, that they know at least once a day they can come and get two meals. You'll also see, which I think is important, and again, the members of this chamber have all this council have noted for a bit, the shift in population within our city and the marked increase in the number of our multilingual learners and multilingual families. And so we, with a charge also from our Board of Commissioners that has also been tracking this increase, you'll see focused investments to really ensure that our multilingual learners receive the strategic support. We will also have a landscape analysis that will also drive some of next year's budget as well. As we hear from our families, what are the things for multilingual learner families that would also make their schooling experience more effective, more enjoyable, but most importantly, have them feel connected as part of this community? You'll see here the multilingual learner supports, as well as the multilingual school success liaisons would be highlights. I will just say, in terms of our leadership, professional learning, you'll see that we continue to invest in new educator induction and mentoring, our summer learning institutes, school leadership development. Very pleased with the fact that the team this year has really been focused on making sure we have high-quality school leaders in every school long before, the month before school, and we have accomplished that. You'll see the youth voice, and matter of fact, we will pass over to city council, we have some great footage from our young people at our Be More Me conference, middle school conference, and it is a wonderful site, I would invite any of you to come, when you actually see middle school students who have put together a conference, and frankly, they look like grown people at their conference, with their conference flyer, having their peers present to them, and being able to go from session to session. Like I said, I actually think their conference was a lot more enjoyable than some I go to. You'll see the investing in our educators, you'll see the higher salaries that I referenced earlier, as well as continuing to offer competitive salaries and benefits. We're proud of the development of our leadership pipeline this year. We were able to fill a number, a good portion, I think at least five, of our school principal vacancies from our internal pipeline folks. So these are Baltimore City Schools educators who came through Baltimore City Schools, engaged in some of the leadership development that we now have internally, and I know there are members of the city council that have asked about this. We believe for the long-term viability of city schools, we have to continue to develop the leaders that are among us. And so I will end there. You all were very patient, I was waiting for the Vice President to, to have to cut me off, but I was speedy at the end, so thank you, ma'am.
Very well done. Thank you for a presentation of progress. And so we're going to start with our council president with comments and his questions.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, thank you, Dr. Santelis, thank you to your entire team. Let me just say, as a city school's dad and former teacher, I appreciate the work you've put in. I know this is your last, I believe, budget hearing? Maybe one more? You got one more? All right, great. So I'll save the plaudits for the next one, but I do want to appreciate your leadership, appreciate how you have moved the system, and appreciate your partnership with this council. I also want to thank the new leadership of the school board, both Chair and Vice Chair, have really appreciated the reset that has gone on with our school board, particularly your relationship with this council, have been really proud of the conversations we've been having between the Chair and Vice Chair, and Chairman Bullock, and Vice Chair Parker, and myself, to really think about what does this next phase of city schools look like? And what, when we start to envision this search for the new school CEO, who are the voices that need to be heard, that are left out of the conversation? And so just appreciate the thoughtfulness that this new leadership of this board has brought. Also wanted to thank your wholeness team, always appreciate what they do, have had a really good partnership with your folks around trauma-informed care and restorative practices and a whole lot else. One area where I want to continue to see some real growth and improvement is student The bottom line is that if kids don't show up to school, they're not going to get a great job, they're not going to go to college, they're not going to be in a trade or an apprenticeship, as Madam Vice President talks about constantly. It is critically important that first and foremost, our children attend school. This has been an ongoing lingering challenge, it got worse during the pandemic, it has gotten better, I believe, since then, but it's still not great. We know there is a complex challenge, some of it due to family stability, mental health, things that our kids are experiencing, things that their parents may be experiencing, and it's also about transportation. And that is something that this council has really honed in on, we had a really good hearing with some of your team as well as the MTA. I want to specifically focus on that transportation piece, I feel like this is a conversation you and I have had for the last eight-plus years. The way our kids are treated on the buses is not good enough. We had a whole issue a couple of years back with kids, the MTA not honoring our kids' S-Passes. Fortunately, we got that fixed, fortunately, we have new leadership at the MTA, I am truly grateful for Administrator Holly Arnold and the work that she's been doing, but the commute times for many of our kids are simply unacceptable. Anything more than forty-five minutes, you start to incur learning loss, you start to see attrition, and kids unable to show up on time at school. And so, Dr. S, in your waning, sunsetting year-plus you have left, I'd like to know what you are doing in partnership with the MTA to improve the commute times for our kids? And, and this just feels like one of those issues that is solvable and that we have not made enough progress on, and I understand there are financial constraints both on city schools and on the MTA, that the state does not have enough money for a lot of things right now, but we got to do better, we got to get our kids to school on time. So if you could talk about partnership with the MTA, and I know that is a topic that this council is very interested in supporting.
No, thank you, Council President, and it absolutely, you know, is, you know, an ongoing issue that we really do all have to dig deeply around, given what we know our young people are facing in just trying to get to school and back home. Along those lines, I will say, and I will echo, that the working relationship with MTA around the MOU really has improved and increased, we continue to work on that, but I will also say, internally, it's not a but, but it's an and, internally to city schools, we continue to look at, for example, route optimization, and I've had a series of meetings with the transportation team this, this spring, to look to say, okay, what other areas for optimization of routes exists? And so we are continuing to look at that. I think the bell time tiers, one of the things that our transportation team worked with our schools office team to see was that we actually got some improvements, some significant improvements, when we shifted bell times. It wasn't perfect for every school, not every school liked it, but we saw some pretty substantial improvement when we really looked at bell time. So we're going to be looking at that again, as well as just some scheduling at the school level. You know, I, I do know, for example, even in some of, you know, some of the banners reporting on this, you know, we have young people who have some of their hardest classes scheduled at the beginning of the day, right? So they're the first class of the day, how are we continuing to work with school leaders, you know, to, to, to work on the school's end with that? I think the other thing that we've seen over the past few years is, we really tried to, you know, we couldn't do as much this year for all of the reasons that I described with the budget situation, but we have also been working on contract versus district-run buses. Now, the cost of a full yellow bus system is just astronomical for right now. I will leave that for a future CEO to wrestle with, because, to put it plainly, we don't have the buses or the money for a full yellow bus system. However, I will say our transportation team has done a really good job of looking at kind of where are the places when we buy, for example, an extra ten buses or short buses, that we can actually optimize routes, we are less dependent on contractors, because, to be fairly forthright, we have parents who call us who want a city schools-run route, because the way that the market is now, it's very hard to hold contractors to the level of quality. I think our transportation team, our legal team, have done a very good job, because, I will just tell you, in my entire time at city schools, it was only up until a couple of years ago that we had the kind of partnership for, for damages, to put it bluntly. So when kids are arriving for, you know, thirty minutes late, there was never any accountability for that, and there is now. I think where we're still challenged is the market, and when you want to release a contractor for poor performance, our team does a really good job of weighing, kind of, well, we can tell them to go away, but if we don't have anything to replace it, then we're going to have young people stranded and put families in a bigger bind. So with all of that being said, we are still looking, and as a matter of fact, I'm hoping that the work the team is doing will be able to make some announcements this summer, but, but I will say publicly, and again, I can say the uncomfortable things now, given where I'm sitting, we are going to have to have a citywide discussion of what is the distance at which we bus children, right? And we live in a city that for very good reason, we have bused large numbers of children, because we're concerned about safety, railroad tracks are in the way, all of those kinds of things. I will also say, though, we are reaching a point where the financial sustainability of our current walk zones versus bus zones, I'm not sure is frankly fully sustainable. I also think, you know, and again, you can say all this when you know it's not going to have to be you overseeing it, I think we're going to have to look at, at some of our, our district assignments too, right? We're going to have to look at where young people are zoned to go to school, but it's going to be a difficult discussion, because right now- But it's going to be a difficult discussion, because right now, that distance that we are saying young people do not have to walk is very expensive. So, we're going to have to have the kind of community conversation that asks some of those hard questions, at the same time that we work on our tech tools, right? How do we get tools? And we now have tools in place that we didn't have when I got here, that actually track bus routes and see, like, which kids are being picked up when. So, it really is a complex issue. I was hoping that we would be able to continue buying kind of more buses, that we could take over, you know, routes. But to be honest, the fiscal landscape right now does not make that a prudent investment right now, in light of not knowing. But that's just some of what we're doing. And definitely welcome Chief Washington, if she would like to add anything, or if that's sufficient.
Dr. S, I would just-
Your phone? Okay, great.
I would just say, you know, I do appreciate that and would welcome the conversation around route optimization and our young people, the distances they have to get to school. We can't advertise school choice if it's not a real choice for our kids and their families. And so, I think this city does need a reckoning or a difficult conversation, whatever you want to call it, and that your agency, City Schools, is really going to have to take some of the lead in pushing MTA, in pushing us, in all of us pushing each other, to be better for our kids. Because I cannot sit here another four years, eight years, whatever, and continue to be in this situation where it just takes too darn long for children to get to school. And in a public transportation-challenged city like Baltimore, we have to figure this out. I'm going to cede my next question for the next round, out of respect for Madam Vice President, who's chairing this hearing, and my colleagues. But we'll continue to push that we have to do better when it comes to student attendance and when it comes to just how quickly our kids can get to school. Thank you, Dr. S. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President Cohen. I remember when you were a councilman pushing some bus passes and so on. So, good to see you're still on that fight to go to the next level. First, a comment, then I'll ask my question, and then we'll do a switch. The Chair of the committee has returned, and she's allowing me to do my question. But my comment at first is I kind of had a flashback of when Baltimore City started with the blueprint. And I remember you saying, you know, we're gonna, it's gonna be rough. We're gonna get, you know, we're gonna do some drops, but we're gonna pick back up. And I had an opportunity at our last Maryland Association of County Legislative Meeting where the surrounding counties now are in basically a dilemma that we've gotten out of. And I had an opportunity to say, well, Baltimore City has increased in their students, in 3,000 students. And it's got to be a reason for that, you know, with people wanting to come to our system. And I say that because, you know, we continue to have our President of the United States make misconception comments about our Baltimore school system when it's, when we are definitely moving forward. And I just had to, you know, it's important to make that statement. So, and then my question is, you know, you mentioned at the very beginning that we still have to stay alert and on task about maybe our loss of some federal money and just, you know, that little slight bleakness. What measures do you have in place to ensure that resources are going to be? Are you thinking ahead? Because we definitely want our resources distributed fairly, you know, across all of our school systems, particularly as we serve the, our disadvantaged communities. And I'm hoping that you are thinking ahead and planning how you're going to maneuver things, because principals are going to start really grabbing, trying to grab and advocate for their school. But we should have a head start in some of the things that we might be thinking about to, you know, just to brace ourselves.
No, thank you, Madam Vice President. And thank you, by the way, for your opening comments as well. And I will say, I get calls all over the country every time something comes out of Washington to say, we know what's really happening in Baltimore City. So, I think we should all take some comfort in knowing that people see what the real work is that's happening here as a city. I will say that your question is very timely. In terms of the, you know, kind of what we are putting in place, I do have to really appreciate the current Board Chair and Vice Chair for being very attuned to the fact that this is a priority of passing on of knowledge, not only from, you know, me to a new CEO, but I think just as important, if not more so, from board member to board member, and making sure that that knowledge of the runway. Some of the preparation is part of what we did this evening, is just making sure that people understand where the pocket, the large pockets of money are that are coming to Baltimore City Schools. And that's really important. And it is why I noted so many times that this council's advocacy at the state level during budget talks, I think, was important. I'm not saying one thing turned things one way or the other. But I do think a united front around our city schools being funded and those key funding streams needs to continue to be part of everybody's conversation and everybody's wording. I think at the school level, one of the things that we've instituted over the last probably seven years, Courtney, remember when we first started doing budget collaboratives with schools, was about seven years? About seven years. The last seven years, we had a process called Budget Collaboratives, where school leaders get to come and meet with key academic departments, their school offices supervisor, as well as members of the finance office. And what those budget collaboratives, I think, have done over the last seven years is build a culture where principals know they have the opportunity to make the case for their schools. And we're often able, with just a small amount of central money, to help them bridge what we view as being critical. On the other hand, we've also, I think, gotten better with our guidance to schools on what is necessary, what should be there. It really isn't a thousand flowers bloom. There are some things that should not be a question based on the autonomy of a school leader. And I think we are getting clearer. We still have a ways to go on that, and I think each cycle we get tighter. But that budget process has actually situated Baltimore City, not perfectly, but in a stronger place than many jurisdictions where everything is just centrally located and centrally allocated, where you don't have school leaders who are used to kind of making those decisions. So, at the school level, there's some knowledge around that. But in the end, it really is the knowledge of as many stakeholders and city leaders as possible who really understand what the levers are that are the most important in city schools funding. And then I'll just end by saying, we've got to continue to show the results. We've got to continue to show the growth. We have to continue to have families who see the difference. Like, I meet families in the supermarket who now say to me, I've had three kids go through city schools, and I see the difference. I see what my kids have access to now that they didn't before. And when you have a public, when you have customers and families who now understand what some of that funding means, they are far more likely to fight to keep it. Our young people were brilliant at the state level in front of, like, a packed, you know, state legislative chamber. And they spoke eloquently about the differences in their education pre-blueprint funding and post-blueprint funding. So, I do think that that's the best inoculation and just to watch. And I do know that the Chair and Vice Chair have been very good about articulating that as a priority.
Thank you. Thank you for that. As the Chair of this committee, Chairman Gray and I do a switch up. We'll go ahead and have Councilmember Gray ask his question.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. First, I just want to start by just thanking you for the progress that city schools have made in a variety of different ways. It seems like there's been a huge difference between when I was at James Mosher and now it's called Billie Holiday, right? So, we have 21st Century Schools. We have a new curriculum. Sports is starting to enter back in. And so, those are things that I'm really hopeful for. As someone who has a kid that turns one on the 10th, you know, it's, those are tough decisions you have to make, whether you want to send your kid to the schools that you went to in middle or high school versus public school. And so, I'm happy that you guys are making that decision a little harder. So, but I want to talk about educational grants for a second. Fiscal year 24 target for the youth served in community schools and out-of-school time programs were 25,300 students served. That was a target, and that was in line with previous years in the actual numbers that came in in fiscal year '21, '22, and '23, I believe. But the actual numbers came in lower at 8,113. Can you explain why?
So, Councilman Gray, that funding is actually allocated to the Family League for their programming that is provided to support city schools around the community schools work and after-school time. And the Family League will be joining us tomorrow morning to speak about their budget. So, that, those questions regarding the- Yep, those questions regarding their metrics may be more appropriate for tomorrow morning's hearing.
That was my only question. So, there we are. Thank you.
Councilman Torrance?
Oh, I'm sorry. Just, Councilman Torrance, do you mind waiting one minute? Go ahead.
Just quickly, I want to clarify also. We do manage the community school strategy directly through the concentrations of poverty grant dollars from the state. All of our students are served by community schools. So, the out-of-school time question, as she indicated, is through the Family League, and that's funding that goes from the mayor's office to the Family League to operate out-of-school time programming in partnership with our community school strategy. But every single one of our schools charter traditional have a community school coordinator in them and serve those schools through our community school strategy. I just wanted to clarify that.
Councilman Torrance?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, ma'am. That's your role. I'll be quiet.
No, you're good. Look, if you know Rita Cruz, I love an administrator, because y'all gonna lead. Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, ma'am. And I'm just going to be obedient. Just wait. So, Dr. S, just want to say two things. As a parent of a child who is reading at age five, I'm thankful for the district's investments in actually providing those supports, as my son is probably aging my wife right now, asking her to read Dogman right now. But it is that avid reader that allows me to see the fruition of what's happening in our schools. As a former employee, I think the district has come a mighty long way. But I still have to keep pushing. And this is not to you tonight, directly to the board. I'm happy that the Chair and Vice Chair are here. These are questions that have come up from discussing with teachers and administrators in the district. As a person who sat in a seat in the midst of a CEO change 10 years ago, it was a shock to us, in a way. So, for me, it is about transparency, but also providing the, I had to say this out loud, the data download from Dr. S's brain into the next person, because our young people deserve continuity. Our staff deserves continuity. And I know that we have a CEO probably beginning of June or July, but I think that we need to have someone named by January. The reason why is because I want that person to have the six-month runway to learn the organization and not try to build a ship without understanding what the ship has in place already, or putting duct tape over things until they figure out what happens. That is a hard point to be in. So, my first question to tonight is, what is the timeline and structure of the CEO search? And how will families, educated students be engaged in shaping the criteria and evaluation of it? Because I think that, and I agree with BTU and others, people have to be at the table. I get that a number of people from districts don't want their name out there publicly when they're considering a job. I think that there has to be people in the room that are families, educators as well, even if it's a conversation with them, so that there is a lens that's present.
I can take that. So, Councilman Torrance, thank you so much for the question. So, one of the things that the board has worked very diligently on is to understand, you know, what the preliminary sets of needs are as we go through this transition. We're thankful that Dr. Santalisis agreed to an additional-year contract with Baltimore City Public Schools that allows us to conduct a thorough search for our next CEO. Part of that work in partnership with Dr. Santalisis is making sure that we do have that opportunity for a download, to make sure that the board is well-educated on the work, the strategies and the initiatives that are well underway in city schools that have allowed for the growth that Dr. Santalisis highlighted at the top in the budget presentation this evening, as well as that opportunity for us, as we start with this process of our search firm to transfer what we believe is going to lead us to a successful CEO identification. The Vice Chair at the top of the meeting also highlighted that we just retained our advisory service through Alma. They are a Chicago-based firm that has worked with a lot of urban superintendent searches. The search processes we've outlined in these kind of initial stages is to make sure that we build a candidate profile that reflects the needs of all of our stakeholders. We need that time to engage with families, with our city council, with our teachers, our unions, to make sure we understand what needs are and what are those criterias and characteristics that we'd like to see in the next superintendent search. That allows us to update what we believe will be the position description that we're looking for and take this time over the course of the next year to identify that candidate. We know our goal and our target goal is to have somebody seated in that role by no later than July 1, 2026. But if that opportunity for us to identify a candidate works sooner, we feel very grateful that we have that partnership with Dr. Santalisis to make sure that we have a smooth, transparent, as open a transition from where we are today to our next, landing of our next CEO coming in place. So, we'll have more information. We just signed our contract with Alma Advisory last week. This will allow us to get started with them right away, and we'll have more updates available to the city council, as well as the public, on specific phases of that search. We've got three very identified stages. So, one candidate profile, two recruitment, three selection. And I'll say the fourth one, which is that onboarding with the board, as well as our principals, our teachers, and other staff.
And here's my patient, Rob. I need tangible timelines, because as someone who sat in searches for executives, we already knew what those timelines were, even with a consulting firm, because in their response to you, more than likely through procurement, they provided a sample of those timelines. I would like to see it, because I think that our partners and our families deserve at least a tentative timeline that is outlined, because it allows us to norm those understandings. Because I know what happens when we do a CEO search. Leadership starts to leave. Staff starts to leave. That ambiguity allows people to feel fearful. They don't know what's coming next in the seat. So, I at least want to have something public-facing that says a timeline, even if it's July through September, we're building a candidate profile. We'll update you with meetings. Something as tentative as that. Because as a parent, that's nervousness for me, right? We have growth. We have opportunities. But people are going to be nervous. And I know that there are some good people that work in central office, and you sit in that uncomfortable seat, not knowing who your next boss is going to be, you're going to start pushing your resume around. So, I think that we need that timeline. And I know from procurement side of it, you have a timeline. So, I would like to see if we had something public-facing before the beginning of summer school. Is that dual?
Let me see to Vice Chair for a little bit more intentional information.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Councilman. So, I was just sickling to Chair Sally, that we do have a tentative timeline that we are willing- willing to share with you. We definitely want to go public with the concrete timeline as soon as we onboard the advisory consultant. Also, another thing I wanted to kind of put on the table is succession planning and transition planning. The current administration is really working hard to identify areas of transition, brain dumping, as you say, internally, so we can have the knowledge if something were to happen at the CEO level. We have, I don't know everyone's hearts at the table, but it seems like we're all here until June 30, 2026. So we're definitely relying on Dr. S. and these capable team that I have behind me today to make sure that we have a thoughtful and thorough transition.
Yes. It is a committee request, by the way. I just want to make sure for the Mayor's Office and council staff, as a committee request, to have something public-facing for the public, because anyone who teaches communications know that you should have something out there. That way, the hearts and minds of others don't get to worrying and cause kerfuffle, as I call it. The next is, as a parent, I think parents should be at the table, I think our teachers should be at the table, because when we think about anyone who leads this district, everything can roll down, and the people who are impacted need to know and tell you how they experience it, so you can build a perfect candidate profile. Not everyone's going to agree with how a CEO leads, but people do remember how policies are implemented to make them feel. So if we can think about how we lead with building a candidate profile that is informed by not only students, staff, and parents, I think that's more informal, even if there are some representatives, because we do have P-CAB and others who have leadership that could be reflected at the table. Even our bargaining partner should be at the table, because at the end of the day, they would more than likely have to negotiate with this person and their representatives. It's a good idea to at least get a sense of who they are. So I would like to know if you guys were willing to add parent, teachers, as well as staff at the table to help with selecting the next CEO, even if it's not in a public-facing completely way, because I know that a lot of candidates won't apply if their name is going to be on a website as a finalist.
I appreciate that. So one of the things that we have committed to very thoroughly as a board is to make sure that we are engaging all of our stakeholders throughout this process. I couldn't agree with you more. As a former city school teacher, as somebody who's been engaged with city schools for a long time, I recognize the importance of making sure that we understand what the needs are and what the opportunities are for our next CEO. We're committed to doing that in the very first stage. As we progress through this process, we want to make sure that as we're building that candidate profile, we have that information, we have those details. As it comes down to selection, our 12-member board will be thoroughly engaged in that process. That allows us to make sure that we have vetted each and every one of those candidates very thoroughly, taken the advice that we've received in those initial stages of stakeholder engagement and outreach from all of our stakeholders, especially parents and teachers who know best as our best consumers of city schools' education, are part of that process. But we, just to go back to your earlier point around the timeline and information for the public, we have set up our website underneath the search website on city schools' website that has some initial details of the timeline and more details about what stakeholder engagement will look like. We're committed to refreshing that, to having more information available on a routine basis as more and more and more comes available. So I do appreciate the sentiments, these are things that the board can continue to consider as we move through this process, and we want to take the counsel of our advisory firm that has worked to have successful searches in each one of their urban searches. So thank you.
I hear you, but again, here's the gentle rub. Other districts have had meetings and focus groups with the finalists and staff, family members present. Reason why is because they want a sense of everyone. This is a big selection. After 10 years of having someone in place, we want to know who's coming in, right? We want to know if people who have been engaged in the system know what that person is, who their heart is, and have those honest conversations with them, because some candidates may say this may not be the best fit. I saw that happen from talking to friends in Philly when they did that process for their C., their next superintendent. They had focus groups when they talked to people. I think that this is, this is where, this is where 1997 has been a thorn for me, because I think that as we build in our partnership with the state, as well as the city, there has to be opportunities where we put more people at the table, and as members who are appointed by the board and as also elected members, I think that people who ultimately will have to deal with the decision have to be at the table, too.
I appreciate that. It's something that the board can take under advisement as we move through this process.
Okay. As my second question, it's related to the past processes. As someone who has been at city schools as an employee, I seen changes in terms of board policy. Will the board move back to confirming the appointees of the CEO for appointments? Before that, they were added onto the PEP report. Will the board move back to approving people who are on the PEP report through cabinet members? Cabinet members were once pepped.
They are pepped now.
Let me make my question more poignant. Will the board interview the candidates selected after they've been identified by the CEO be prior to the PEP?
So our number-one job as a board, we, our main employee is Dr. Santa Lisa's now and the CEO. The CEO typically builds her cabinet or his or her cabinet as they so choose. That's the latitude that we want to make sure that we are empowering the CEO to do, to build the team that they feel is going to best serve our city schools, our families and our students and our young people. What comes before the board is the confirmation of that, so we're not involved in the actual selection, nor are we involved in the interview process. So we do have the recommendation of the CEO. Once she has done that thorough vetting of that work, that comes before the board for the confirmation of those folks in those roles. Our trust is in our CEO to make sure that they have done thorough vetting, that they have looked for a certain alignment that fits within the values of city schools, as well as the opportunity that has the best credentials to really enact the work and carry that out as he or she so chooses.
As someone with historic knowledge of prior to Dr. Santa Lisa's and previously Dr. Thornton, there was a more, far more engaged board process in cabinet members being selected from working with persons who were in the state legislature at the time, that was, those conversations did occur. So I'm just wondering if we move back to those practices.
I will just add this, that it may not be, I think those personnel discussions actually occur, have often occurred during exec sessions. So I think it's important for the public to know that there's, there are times, both with this board and frankly, previously, where questions about a particular candidate do come out, because they are personnel questions, just like you were referencing before, we are allowed to have those discussions as part of exec session because they're personnel. But I actually do get questions from board members about a particular individual that I might want to nominate, and actually, there are times where, in the past, not, you know, currently, because I haven't hired any cabinet members recently, but in the past, I've actually asked members of the board to be part of the interviewing process, if necessary. But it has been my purview, but I do, I do want to make sure, you know, that the council knows and the public knows that that actually does occur. It's not just a placement, and the board says nothing. Normally, when I cue someone up, there is a, an opportunity for board members to pressure-test some of those choices. Now, again, you know, the particulars of the policy clearly are beyond my purview, and that's the board, but I do think folks should know that that does occur, at least in every current cabinet member right now.
So I was alluding to that, because I wanted to have that conversation publicly, because I think that in my heart, and I know from government, that those conversations have to happen, right? And members have to be able to be comfortable with those persons. And I say that because I am a firm believer that we need to really revisit the 1997 law as well, about how we do this dual governance with the state and the city. But I think, and this is something I've noticed as we're resetting the board, I think that the board needs to, and this is just a critique, that be more active as governance. And I say that in, in a wholehearted and loving way, because oversight is where I think, as a part-time board, you guys have all the other jobs in the world to do. But I think that in terms of that, there has to be a symbiotic relationship hand-to-hand, because ultimately, some people may tune out, and you got to have the, you got to have that relationship with your next CEO. With that, Madam Chair, I'll just wait for the next round for my next question.
Thank you, Councilman Torrance. Dr. Santa Lisa's, first of all, I want to thank you and your team. I'm very grateful about we having a ribbon-cutting on Wednesday for Furley Elementary, and I know how hard you and your team, how hard Senator McCray, our mayor, fought before I got on this council, before I got on this council, to make sure that we receive new schools within Northeast Baltimore and East Baltimore. So first, I do want to thank you for that, and I'm looking forward, very ecstatic, very blessed, very grateful that that school is coming. And that's going to take me into this question. We're all thankful of the increase in our student enrollment, and I know, and everyone on council know that that's driven by our immigrant community. One issue of mine is middle neighborhoods. It's been an issue of mine for a very long time, and about how we retain our legacy residents, primarily African-American residents within my community. I have a neighbor, they have maybe about seven children. I know at least five of those children went through Gardenville Elementary School, which is down the street. Now, my neighbor is moving, they're moving to North Carolina. And I sat in these budget hearings, not within the B., not within the school, the schools' hearing, but another hearing, and I said, I'm noticing a trend within my communities that when families, legacy families are leaving, they seem to be moving to North Carolina and South Carolina, or they're moving right across the line to the county, because I'm right on the county line. So that's the trend, one or the other. I wanted to know, what is, what is, what is your enrollment strategy, more so your retention strategy, to retain our legacy families and bring those families, the ones who are not attending city schools, to bring them back, and the ones who are, to keep them, to keep those families in that school? I just want to know what exactly is the, is the retention strategy?
No, it's, it's an excellent question, Madam Chair. And I will say that one of the things that I mentioned earlier was a statistic about the first time this year having significantly less, you know, middle-class African-American families leaving. And part of why that is significant is because that is a, clearly not the only demographic we serve, but to your point, the demographic that has, has the most choice, right? Because not only is it choice within city schools, do I go here or do I go there, but some of the choices that you reference, like do I want to move to North Carolina? Do I want to move to Memphis, right? Those are all cities that we know people from Baltimore leave to go live. I mean, you can look at, you know, you can look at the data from the state, and you can look at the data from the city. Part of what we are working to do and that we take very seriously is how are we in tune with what all families want, right, for their young people and want, what do they want school to look like? And overwhelmingly, and I think it's really interesting that, I love the term legacy families, because it's a great term, when I speak to legacy families, they have a picture in their mind of what school should be. And they want that picture that includes, and it's not a minor thing, it includes, they want their young people to be able to go on school field trips, they want their young people to be able to be on a sports team, they want their young people to be able to be the star in the school musical, they want their young people to have scholarship opportunities, they want, so it's more than just the fundamental which every family wants, which is, I want my child to be safe, and I want my child to learn. But that a lot of families, when they're making decisions to stay, we know there are key points. So for example, when young people enter, when families enter in pre-K, right, one of the things that we tell principals, and you will notice this in our schools that have climbing enrollment, particularly K-8 schools, those principals are very aware that people are coming in pre-K, but they're looking at your first, your second, your third grade classroom. Because their question, and I know this as a former city schools' pre-K parent, is, is this a place I can keep my child and know that they're going to look like Councilman Torrance's child, which by the way, I will go on the record as saying, I got to see the video of the reading, which was absolutely beautiful, brought little tears to my eyes. I love when babies read. But that's like what they want to know. I think that it is at middle school, which is another departation point, right? People want to know what kinds of learning, like will my child have the option of taking algebra in middle school if they're accelerated? Will my child have access to, I mean, it sounds funny, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I was not a big athlete in K-12. I was a dancer, I was not an athlete. But, but like, I know that, like, that's a big deal. And so some of our families are coming back and they're staying, because they remember being on a sports team, because they remember having an art class, because that's what they want for their young people. And so a lot of the wholeness work that we've been doing over the last years is to say, like, your child can go to city schools and learn an instrument. And, and it's part of why I've led in a way that I want for everybody's children what my children have. I don't want to stand and watch my daughter run cross-country in middle school, which by the way, is what drove me to make sure we had middle school athletics, even though half my team, literally, I thought was going to strangle me in the middle of the night, was because it made no sense for me to watch my daughter run cross-country when not everybody else's daughter could run cross-country. And so part of what we, what we are seeing is not that we have the perfect options, but what we are seeing is that there are more options, that it's not just four or five schools that people are willing to put their child in for elementary schools. We're now seeing 20 to 25, right, that are really popular. I don't mean okay, but that like you could go across the city, be it leadership or others, and there are places people want their kids to go. I think the work we have to do, very honestly, that we have not done, and I actually sent an email to the team last week, and I think this is work we're going to try to start my final year, but I think the council, the board need to attend to it, is, we know, I know there are other districts who do far more refined marketing research on those families. They are constantly questioning them, it's not just a once-a-year survey, they are using top-notch marketers to be able to say, why are you leaving? Why are you staying? And if you left, why did you leave? That, for me, is the next generation of, of, of surveying that we need to do, because I think that's what kicks in. The other pieces that our school's office has gotten better, frankly, at supervising principals and saying, you know what, if you've got somebody mean and nasty in your front office, people are not going to want to come to your school. I mean, at a very basic level. I mean, I have said that, I don't care if that's public, private, parochial, or West Baltimore, if you've got somebody nasty in the front office, the likelihood that people are going to want to keep their child there is slim to none. So part of the work we've been doing, I know Karen Lawrence and some other folks, we've been working on what does customer service look like, just some foundational pieces. And then, though, I think that as a district, it is knowing beyond just instinct. Like my instinct as a mother told me, if you don't have advanced academics opportunities in every neighborhood, why would somebody keep their child there? If my child's telling me I want to be an engineer, but there's no algebra in middle school, why in God's name would I keep my child in your school? If you have that, then I'm likely to give it a try. And we're seeing it in places like Mount Royal. We're seeing... We're seeing it, um, at, uh, James McHenry, where we put in Ingenuity Program. It's not just in Roland Park anymore. We're seeing other families make decisions based on where we have that programming. But it is our job and something we have to work on is actually fine-tuning their marketing. I sat with five district superintendents um, two weeks ago in DC, and the level of marketing data that they have on who's choosing their schools, why they're choosing them, when they leave, what brings them back, is frankly at a higher level than where we are now. And I think that's the work. But I, but I will say, I hear you. I think that is the reason why we're losing. We, we lost the smallest number of middle-class black families that we have in a while. We also have Latino families who, to your point, cross the border. They go to another district and then we get them back a year later. And you know why? Because they're saying, in my school in Baltimore City, I was treated kindly. I was, you know, th- they had translation for me, we had a community. And so we have some of our principals, like I said, in our large multilingual learner schools, who they have families coming back over the border. So I actually, you know, and I understand that there are issues with choice. I think that the, um, council president raised some really good ones, but I also know that's why I have not moved off of choice. Because it begins to show us patterns of who is getting it done for kids and parents and who is frankly waning. And you can see it in every neighborhood. People talk about low-income families, don't talk about low-income families. They move faster than frankly some of the more heavily resourced families, because they're like, I have nothing to lose, right? We'll stay and say, well, maybe if I had a little tutoring or I'll get to soccer on the weekend. Our low-income families, I, I see, they will make a beeline in a year. They're like, nope, found out there was a really nice person over there and their kids are reading, I'm going to that school. So I actually think our work is again, to ramp up our marketing, we've got to go to the next level. Two, we've got to continue to hold school leaders accountable and provide them with the training. And three, it's to make sure that the work to equalize opportunity continues in every zip code in this city, because then there's less likely to be people. I mean, we have city school staff will tell me where they put their kids. When I came here as CEO, there were five schools, city school staff would put their kids. And I, I'm including everybody from food and nutrition workers to cabinet members. That is not the case anymore. That is not the case. People are finding, but I don't need 25 or 30, I need 90. So we're not there yet, but I, I appreciate your question and frankly, Madam Chair, I hope you ask it every year. Because that is kind of the bottom line, is how do our fam- the families are not watching what the White House says. They're, they're not watching what, they, they don't really care, with all due respect to the president, they're not watching what the president is saying. We have families in some of our schools that are leaving private schools because they're like, my kid needs something different and they're not getting it there and I'm paying tuition. I think we can compete with, I, I am not afraid of competition. I am not afraid of competition. I have families who come up to me in the supermarket and say, we chose city schools. We love this principle. Right? We, we love our school. I have people from alum, I'm in Eddie's on Roland Ave, and I have people come up to me and say, my three kids went to city schools, this is what they're doing now. They've graduated from college at, what, I don't, I think we can compete when we have the accountability structures, when we make sure we're investing opportunity-wise. And I, I think you continue, with all due respect, Madam Chair, to ask that question every single year and ask for the data points and ask for how we know, because you, that is the key to our longevity as a public school system.
One, dancers are athletes. Two, I know we can compete. I know we can compete. Um, I sat at a table with some folks who did not go to city schools. And when that argument came up, because typically I'm wearing, I'm wearing a ring, we're from Baltimore, so I'm wearing a high school ring typically. But I said, I'm still at this table with you.
That's right.
So what I'm hearing, um, I don't want to ask the question. I don't want to ask the question every year. I know I'm gonna be asking it the, the next few years, but I don't, I want to see you guys do that work. Um, where we're not asking the questions, but you're coming, just like you're putting these data points, um, before us to say, this is what's happening and this is where we improve, improve. But you're going to say, hey, we put this marketing plan together and it's a part of this particular strategy. And we're getting it done. I love what you said. I hope that city schools is moving. With that, especially if other jurisdictions are using data that way to keep our students here. And to keep our families here. I think like that's first, usually I'm saying legacy residents, but legacy families fit today. I'm gonna stop and we're gonna get to the next person that's on here. I thank you for your response and I thank you all for the work that you do. Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good to see you, Dr. Santa Lysis.
Good to see you, sir.
Always a pleasure. Um, and I, I appreciate you, have always appreciated you and your passion for this work. I, I know, uh, you work incredibly hard and you're in a you, you, you're doing a lot of work to make sure that we, um, support our young people. Uh, so I appreciate you. Um, I also want to thank you and your team for the work that you guys did, um, with the council to put together, uh, the bill focused on chronic absenteeism. My first question is a very brief one with regard to that. When we drafted the bill, uh, the intention of the bill was trying to get a comprehensive look at the things that are barriers to young people getting to school. Of course, trans- transit is one of them. Um, but as we know, there are a lot of things that, um, can cause problems for young people going to school. And, um, not all those things are in the school's purview. Not all of those things are things you can control as school CEO. Um, some of those things are things that you need to partner with the city or the state. Transit is one of them. Um, so, uh, uh, my, my question is very brief. Um, I know we were figuring out funding for that. I'm curious if, um, we figured out funding or if funding is, uh, determined in this budget.
No, that's a great question and I'm gonna ask, um, Sonya Goodwin, is she here? Oh, you wanna, okay, so, um, the Chief of Staff will start with the funding question and then I'll ask, um, Executive Director, um, Goodwin to kind of add from a programmatic and operational standpoint. Will that help? Will that answer your question? Okay, great.
Yeah, from the, um, so appreciate your partnership with us on the, um, on the resolution. So on the study, we have it all teed up and ready to go. We were just waiting for word from, about funding, but we have that all teed up and ready to go, the study. And we have a partner who can do that analysis, I think, fairly quickly. Um, I think we have been doing a lot of thoughtful work on engagement, so that's where, um, Executive Director Goodwin can talk about the, you know, collaborative team that we have, as well as the continuous improvement work that we do to address that, that then we would love to then have, uh, measured in, in a study.
Hello, my name is Sonya Goodwin, the Executive Director for Whole Child Services and Supports. And just to make sure I answer your question correctly or make sure I give you the information you requested, can you just ask one more time?
Um, this is regarding the chronic absenteeism study that we, um, we, the resolution we passed as a council, uh, in partnership with the school system. I wanted to know, uh, where we were with funding for that, because the idea here is to, uh, complete the study in time for the next school year, hopefully.
Yep, so I can tell you some things that we currently have in place. Um, I know our Chief of Staff, um, responded to the funding part, but some of the, um, information that we have, uh, were some of the things that we're currently working on. Um, we have a team at Central Office who, um, is, who gives direct supports to 96 of our schools. The other schools receive indirect supports. Um, and what that looks like is a team of two to three individuals going out to provide the supports that's needed to schools. It's important for us to give those individual supports to them so that it's not like a cookie cutter, thinking that it's going to be one particular, um, thing that can address all schools. And with that being the case, we're able to do the continuous improvement work with our schools so that they can pick a strategy or they can pick, um, a, a body of work that they're going to focus on, which may be different on the east side than it is on the west side. And then we have a team that actually goes in with them. Um, they help them to plan, they help them to look at the data, they help them to make sure that they're addressing all of the particular needs. And then they'll go, um, come back around to see if it's working. We're also sharing best practices across the, um, district so that everyone is not trying to work in silos to, um, get something done that everyone is actually working on. We had, we start this work in the summer. Um, we have summer teams that are actually in the schools. When we talk about the additional bodies, we did not put the additional bodies at the central office. We do have supports there where we could do a trainer-trainer model, but we knew that it was important to make sure there was representation at each school. So we made sure that the representation there, we were building their capacity so that they're able to address the individual needs of the families. Um, having someone there at the school is very important because that relationship piece, that's where that wholeness piece comes in, is so important. And so instead of us going in once every two weeks, we have individuals who are actually there at the schools who are supporting the families, they're, um, providing resources. Um, and also we share like resources across the different schools that they're able to, um, tap into.
So, uh, I, I appreciate that. Um, I'm glad to hear you guys are already, and I know you guys are already working on the issue when we first started discussing it. Um, I, oh, one request I would make to that end is, um, as you are making interventions, before you make those interventions, make sure we establish a baseline. Grab information from students to understand their base experience so that we can get a real sense of whether or not the interventions that we are using are having the outcomes we want to see and why. Um, it just is a matter of, um, process, I think it's helpful so that when we do see outcomes improving, we can definitively say why and, and not just that it happened. Um, the other piece, uh, I want to make this an official committee request, because I do want to make sure um, that we do see this study to its finish. Um, I think it's really important that we understand how the city can be partners in this effort. You know, I, 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 I think we all want to see this, our school system and our students succeed and that starts first with them going to school. So I want to make sure. Can we set up a, a meeting with myself, um, and someone from the administration? I see the deputy mayor in the back. I'd be happy to meet with the deputy mayor to figure out what we can do, uh, to fund this study. If I recall, the study was to the tune of a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, I would say in the grand scheme of, uh, the school's budget, this is not all that much. Um, but I do think it would have huge ramifications for determining how schools, the school system, the city and the state can partner to, um, make our efforts to make sure students are getting to school as effective as possible. So, um, I'd like to set that up if we can do that within the next two weeks. Uh, that'd be great.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, we can do that. And I do want to thank Executive Director Goodwin um, because she's also part of that facilitation across, um, agencies that you, that, that you just referenced, Councilman. So, um, thank you for jumping up in this.
Thank you. Uh, my, my second question, um, the, this budget weeks, dare I call it that, um, started off with a lot of conversation around vacancies uh, in the city and, um, overtime. And we did get into a conversation around apprenticeships and partnerships with schools. I know we've been doing a lot to, um, get young people into the trades. I would love to hear an update on that. Um, and how those efforts are going, what we're learning from those efforts. Um, but also I'm, I'm very curious, uh, around, around efforts to, um, connect young people to city jobs. Uh, the President was talking earlier about, um, his concern about AI. Um, and I, I understand and agree with many of those concerns, but I will tell you, we are always gonna need police officers. We're always gonna need firefighters. Uh, we're al- always gonna need people making sure that our water system is, um, secure and safe. And those will always be people because, uh, machines can't do that in the foreseeable future. So I'm really curious, um, what efforts, we were talking about trees earlier and forestry. I don't see any, um, any, uh, AI bots climbing up trees to cut, uh, uh, branches off of, uh, an old tree. So I think there are huge opportunities here to work for the city and to start in careers at the city level. Uh, and there's a desperate need for it. Uh, we have a ton of vacancies across the city. And I'm curious how we're thinking about preparing young people for jobs, uh, at the state and local level. Um, so, I'll hand that off to you.
Sure. Do you want to go?
Uh, so we've been, so thank you for the question. Um, we have been, um, working with both the mayor and the city council president on, um, looking at how to do just that, how to create partnerships with, um, the city, um, in particular areas. So we had a meeting with, um, many of the key agencies, um, to identify their workforce needs. So DOT, um, DGS, um, BPD, Fire Department, uh, Department of Public Works. Um, and kind of went through what are the areas where they see, um, the key positions that they need, where they see the vacancies coming? What are the kind of career, um, what are the certifications that they need? Um, and so then we kind of have gone back and, uh, worked with, um, our career, um, our Secretary of Success and Innovation Office to identify where we have pathways that align. Uh, and they are in some cases, meeting, um, individually with some of those departments and have been, um, to talk about what, um, what they need exactly and how to better align, um, the programs that we have. Um, so for example, like, um, one of the areas of alignment or interest was 911 dispatch, um, per BPD. So, um, there is, um, the, the 911 dispatch certification was one of the, um, first, we offered that for the first year this year. So we did have 31 students certified, um, across three different schools. Um, and so that's an area where, you know, came out of a partnership of working with them and trying to figure that out and, um, making sure we had more students available for that, that cadet program. We've also lost, launched a cadet program in, uh, 24, 25 uh, across, um, Digital Harbor, Forest Park, Poly, uh, Poly, Western and ACE. Um, so to try to identify more cadets. So there'd been prior work with, um, the Fire Department too, um, and so continuing that kind of work. So really trying to make sure we're being strategic about just what you said is, um, what are, where are we, do we see opportunities to, um, to provide pathways for our students to have these good, these are good-paying careers with, you know, with predictability um, and, um, and benefits and so on, so.
Absolutely. And I would, I would suggest, um, there's already some opportunity here with the, the youth worth, wow, Youth Works Program. There, there is that connectivity, but, uh, it's the step into a, you know, job should a young person want it when they graduate from high school at 18, 17, 18, 19. We certainly want them, but we want to make sure they're prepared and sometimes those, those pieces need to be organized in advance so they can get the hands-on experience. And there's probably ways to, um, to streamline those efforts. So I, I'd be very curious and maybe, um, we, we can submit this as a follow-up. If you can give me some insights on, um, the opportunities that we're looking at and you, you let me know what timeline is appropriate, because I think it's more important that we get it right than we get it fast. The, uh, the agencies we're looking at working, uh, working with, the types of opportunities we're looking at within those agencies. Um, and if we have already made connections, the number of students that have made that connection, whether it's in the Fire Department, Police Department as a cadet or otherwise. I'd be very curious to see, um, you know, in the last year, for instance, um, how many young people have started to make a step in that direction?
Yeah, we can certainly follow up with some of that data and I was remiss in not mentioning MOED. We have a tremendous partnership with them and, um, and through youth work programming in the summer and then also, um, of course, there are career counselors that are part of the, um, blueprint um, that are advising students and then, um, also starting to think more about, and we, and I say all this to say, I'm just giving you an update, but it's not as if we've solved this. We have plenty of work to do on this and are continuing to think about how to make this better. Um, but, uh, including year-round youth works is how do we, um, provide more aligned opportunities for young people in year-round youth works?
I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Parker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's good to see all of our friends from Baltimore City Schools here today. Thank you for spending the evening with us. Let's begin talking a little bit about, um, about pre-kindergarten. I noticed in the appendix, uh, it mentions kind of what the cost of universal pre-K would be. And that it, that it, without additional funding, it would be, I mean astronomical, right? I want to speak a little bit, I know this year, there's a 5 million increase for pre-K. And I'm curious as to what that reflects in terms of, are we, are we adding seats with that? Is it increased costs? I mean, I know we certainly spoke about, uh, the importance of compensating our educators, but uh, granted that universal pre-K is, uh, somewhere around triple the number of students I think we currently are serving, things like that. Is this progress towards that and then, and, and then projecting into the future? And then, and then projecting into the future, are we likely to see continued progress in terms of, in terms of gradual expansion, even if that broader goal is far out there?
No, so one of the things that I think we have done is double down on quality of pre-K. Right? So while, you know, absolutely, you know, there is some expansion. I think the expansion is mostly coming in the form of duty centers. And that's because of the more robust support. The, a lot of the investments we've made, for example, have been in things like pre-K curriculum materials, right? And making sure that those are standardized. We've had really good feedback. Even when I have been in schools and visited pre-K classrooms, the overwhelming majority of, of teachers, that's not to say everybody. I did get one, you know, side email from somebody, you know, who had a Frog Street question. But I would say most pre-K teachers that I have conversations with and our PD is showing that there's uptick. And I think that that, that quality piece is also connected to some of what you're seeing in those costs. I will say because we, and I can't remember my colleague on the Eastern Shore, but we're like two of the districts with highest level of poverty who have been, which, oh, thank you. See, this is why you have your team here, Washington County. And that Superintendent and I have had like real discussions about being districts that were doing pre-K long before kind of the state really kind of went into this push. And we've been working and that's why it's great that Sandy chimed in. She's our blueprint guru in addition to budget person. And one of the things that we've been really focused on is while the rest of the state is doubling down on expansion, both of us are really looking at what are the ways that we improve the quality and increase the amount of services that are connected to it. So I would say part of it is that. Sandy, do you want to add anything around kind of the budget with regards to pre-K?
Yeah, I'd just add that this is also the first year that the state is beginning to phase in any Tier Two funding. So it is just for a small fraction of Tier Two. It's just 300 to 360% of the, of the poverty, of the federal poverty level. But it is still additional funding that we are grateful to receive. So that is part of what's driving that too. We, we do have an enrollment increase. But as Dr. Santa Lisa said, we have seats to serve all comers right now. We're very proud of that.
Very good.
And I would just say also, the, there is still a gap in pre-K. So between the resources we receive versus the cost. So that part of the challenge is when we get these increases, it's still just closing a gap. So that is a challenge. And also just one last note is that we've seen a significant increase in the number of students qualifying for special ed in pre-K. And so that, I think, coming out of the pandemic and so that you, that is added to the cost too. So just, it is expensive. It's an important investment and it's one we, I mean, when Dr. Santa Lisa and I first started way before the blueprint, you know, we knew, in our first year, we knew there was an enormous budget gap. We didn't quite know what it was yet and what the drivers were. So we brought in educational resource strategies to do that analysis for us. And they identified it as $130 million budget gap in that first year. And one of the, I think it was four drivers, five drivers, was full day pre-K. And so we have never regretted, I mean, that's true. It's a driver of, of some of the financial challenges we've had and it continues to be a gap. And it is absolutely an investment that we are never second guessed in terms of being worthwhile. But it does have cost.
And that emphasis on quality and that long-term emphasis on, on quality here, I mean, you can see, I mean, the KRI scores are fantastic. They've always been strong and they're, they're getting even stronger, which is, is just really encouraging to see. And even those, those numbers you mentioned, the Chief of Staff, Perkins Cohen, around, around the special needs services, special education services. What a huge benefit to have folks who are accessing those services now as opposed to later in their educational career and to be able to have, you know, folks who are looking out for it. Do we have a sense, following up on that, do we have a sense of, and again, not to be all doom and gloom, but that have we given an assessment of what the impact to cuts to Head Start would mean for the broader early childhood educational framework here in our city? Granted that they serve younger students as well, but, but up to, up to pre-K age students. And so do we have some, some sense of, of what that would look like?
One of the big unanswered questions around the implementation of the blueprint has been how Head Start fits in. Head Start programs have had to individually apply to, to the, to MSDE through the Accountability and Implementation Board. So there's actually a pretty small representation of Head Start in our private providers that are part of the blueprint funding. That said, at the same time, we know there are lots of kids in Head Start in Baltimore City. And if those programs were to close because their funding was to disappear, certainly those kids would, would be looking for placements in city schools, you know, and elsewhere.
And just by way of reminder additionally, Councilwoman Parker, that our biggest pre-K investment, if you look at the money we're getting from the state, is in students with disabilities, low-income students, multilingual learners. And so, you know, only because, you know, I know you started with the goal of universal pre-K and where are we with that? I would say those are still the families that, you know, that, that funding targets. And so any discussion, you know, of expansion has to take that into account as well.
Absolutely. Speaking of multilingual learners, I really appreciate the increased investment in multilingual learners. It looks like close to 9 million from 86, 978 to 95, 588, massive increase in multilingual learners. In terms of where that is winding up, sorry, I have that page bookmarked here. I see that, at least on this slide, related to support for multilingual learners, 1.8 million in centrally provided supports, 40.1 million for school-based supports, and then 700K, 2 million for multilingual learners, school success liaisons, and 700K for the Multilingual Enrollment Service Center. I was curious in particular if you would just expand a little bit on what that looks like, especially the Enrollment Service Center? I think the, the chairwoman alluded to the great work that's being done already with the newcomer center at, at North Avenue. And I visited there with families and, and seen them get great support and care. So speak a little bit to that, if that's an expansion of that or expanding that program. And then talk a little bit more about what that 40.1 million in the schools looks like. I mean, what, what are we doing more of and what are the results that we're seeing so far?
Yeah, and I will invite Chief Dubrowski to also, to also speak to this so she can come up. I will start by saying that a lot of that multilingual learning, learner support is in actually for the first time this year, filling the number of ESOL positions that, that we had at schools. And one of the first things, and I made sure during the opening weeks of school, I actually called Chief Dubrowski and spoke with Chief Nielsen. And one of the things I said uniformly when I was talking to ESOL teachers was the jubilation over the fact that we actually had full staffing, right? Like that we actually had the numbers of people and that they weren't having caseloads of 50, 60 students, which was absolutely untenable if you really wanted to provide that support. So really happy for that really dig in the work that literally had us starting the school year in a stronger place than we have around this area. But I'll turn it over to Chief Dubrowski to talk a little bit more about that.
Thank you, Dr. Santa Lisa, and thank you for the question. So I think as the, as the council already knows, the state council knows, this is a bursting population. So it is growing exponentially. It's the fastest growing population in our city. So the work that we've been doing out in our schools, so now 11 of our schools and city schools are over 50% multilingual learners. So the level of support we want to be able to provide in those schools is very robust. So it's everything from not just working with single teachers here and there, but actually the whole school community, the whole staff, to be able to understand what English language development looks like. And what we know is that when we invest our professional learning in those spaces, all of the students in that community flourish. So we, we have been increasing the number of supports to those schools. And because we have more schools, that's, that's one of the places where we see the investment. The other piece we've been doing is quite a bit of work with our colleagues who are in the central office but deployed out to schools, who touch our other schools who may not be part of that 11, but have a multilingual learning group in their school. So we do a lot of strategic coaching in those schools. Again, working not just with English language development teachers, but all teachers to again, make sure that we're, that we are supporting those, those students as they're taking on, again, the same kinds of classes that our native English speakers are taking. So our math, our science, our social studies, our, our literacy classes. So that work is, is quite extensive. The other piece that I would just lift up is we have done quite a bit of work with monitoring our students. So we have some robust tools to help us watch and track their English language development over time. And so those platforms and that technology is another investment we've made. We're very proud that when our multilingual learners come to us early in their development, they do very well and we actually see them exiting with that strong English foundation and, and do well on our standardized tests in the state. So again, that has been another part of our investment work. And then I think the last thing I would say is that some of our work, particularly with our secondary students who come to us later in their career, they bring a unique set of skills and they also bring a unique set of needs. And so we've done some really important work at our middle and high schools to ensure that those students have opportunities because they, we want to keep them on track to graduate. So there's some work that we need to do around their courses to ensure that they're getting both the English language development and the content simultaneously. So there's some co-teaching going on there. So again, investing in that and it's, again, showing in our data. So this most recent graduating class, we saw a 13% increase of our multilingual learners in their, in their graduation rate, which was very promising. And we're seeing fewer drop out. And again, when we get our multilingual, multilingual students in that middle and high school range, there's a lot more vulnerability in terms of their ability to stay with us. And so that level of wraparound service to really help them be successful is another important investment that we're making in this budget. So.
Thank you so much. There was just the one piece about the, the Multilingual Enrollment Service Center.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yes. So the Multilingual Enrollment Service Center, it's right next to my office. It is the best place to be in North Avenue. So in that space is where we welcome our families. They come to us, they are bringing perhaps a transcript from another country where their child had been attending school. They may be coming with questions about what paperwork do they need to have in terms of immunizations? They may need to know whether or not their child will be eligible for multilingual services. So there's some screening that we do. It's a wonderful space. It's fun because they typically leave with a backpack and some books and just lots of smiles because they feel welcomed. And it is something that we're excited, and we're excited as part of our renovations at North Avenue that they're going to have even a more robust space. We made investments last year, in last year's budget, to have more FTEs in those spaces. So you're not going to see that reflected. But it's again, just a space that is so important for this, for this community.
Thank you.
Can I just add one thing to that? It's just a shout out for Chief Dubrowski's staff, which is, we got some early survey results from families today. And one of the things that they did say is how supportive they feel when they, when they go to MASC. And so those renovations that Chief Dubrowski talked about will also move the Multilingual Enrollment Service Center to the first floor. So right when you walk in, it'll be right there, it'll be easily accessible. That's, you know, we have so many families coming in and so we want them to feel welcome. We've been trying to make very small but beautification investments to the forward-facing parts of the central office to make it feel welcoming to families. And that's, and that's one of the next stages that's coming up.
Thank you, Dr. Santa Lisa. Thank you, team. Thank you, Madam Chair.
If I may, right quick, this is an area, Councilman Parker, that the board has taken tremendous interest in, making sure that our budget, our services, Dr. Santa Lisa's and our team are serving multilingual students and families across the board. What we know is that there, these students come in at various age ranges. They may not necessarily match the grade appropriate space that they're supposed to be in. But they, what we thought were concentrations back initially and years ago, decades ago, in certain parts of our city, we're seeing multilingual learners throughout the entire city of Baltimore. So we need to make sure that we have enough teachers, educators, support services throughout all of our schools here in Baltimore City. And we appreciate just the attention to detail that Dr. Santa Lisa's and team throughout the range of services, throughout all of our colleagues here who focus on family and community engagement, focus on wraparound learning, academics, social emotional needs. You name it, that's represented here and more. Safety with Chief Shorter, these things really do impact the, the quality of education our multilingual learners receive. So we appreciate knowing more, how from a board perspective, we can support that work.
Councilman Jones?
And thank you, Madam Chair. First, I just want to take this time as a new council member just to uplift the, the work you've previously done, already done to get schools this far, but also recognize we've got a lot further to go. And I look forward to working with you all on, you know, closing that gap and making those changes to give out young folks the, the school and the experience that they deserve. With that said, my first question was regarding, we spoke a lot in the last couple of days around workplace safety and just keeping workers safe and making sure when men and women, you know, leave out to go to work, they come home safe. They come home the same way they left. So with that said, I was just curious, so what preparations are you doing with principals, managers and supervisors to ensure that the school system is in compliance with Maryland's heat stress standards? When it comes to the temperature, when it comes to, you know, if there are any schools working, there's no AC, when it comes over, I think, 80 degrees? Their recommendations on the keeping workers safe inside and outside of facilities? Are you working with principals and things to incorporate that?
No, thank you very much. I shouldn't say no, but thank you very much, Councilman Jones, for that, for the, for the question. We, in terms of heat standards, climate standards, you know, never waste a good crisis or emergency. About seven, eight years ago, when we, we had a number of our systems go down, we took that opportunity to really institute clearer protocols around when a school building closes due to kind of internal temperatures rising above a certain level. Our operations team, Dr. Washington and her team have done just fabulous work in making sure that our systems for, for building monitoring are far more modernized. My husband still tells the joke about, you know, do we need to use a meat thermometer to actually tell the temperature of a building eight years ago? And now we have remote electronic systems. And that's because the operations team has done that work to really modernize Baltimore City schools. So we have a lot more capability to get visibility into what the school temperature is. I will also say and lift up the work of the school's office and Chief Placetose and that office that have worked over the years to also have frankly, a better and a tighter communication and working relationship between school principals, school-based staff and operations to have tighter communication. So one of the things that I think is, or I know is true now is a lot of the climate issues that those who have been on the council a long time or even as citizens remember is significantly lower than it was before. We have clearer thresholds for internal temperature and when we dismiss or call school. And we also are very fortunate and proud of the fact that as an entire city, right, in collaboration with the mayor, with this body, we now have, we hit our target and our articulated goal for making sure all of our buildings have air conditioning. So those, that, that context is far more modernized and streamlined than it was. If you, if you were asking that question eight, nine years ago, like some of your former colleagues or former members of the council did at the time, then I would have said we have a long way to go. Now I can sit here nine years later and say to you, we're much further along. And both, not just in the physical plans, but also in the way that our teams are working together, which from my perspective, in some ways is even more important because that's the kind of system and relationship that lives on beyond whoever is sitting in my seat. the kind of system and relationship that lives on beyond whoever is sitting in my seat.
Got you. Thank you. Because, and I was thinking more so when school's out of session, you know, and the children aren't there, and just when the workers are working outside and inside.
Oh, I see.
Because last September, the state of Maryland introduced new heat standards for workers. And just trying to make sure that those standards are in place and whether or not you work with the state and motion to, to figure out what their new regulations are, their new standards to keep workers safe.
No, my, my apologies. And I will ask Chief Washington to more directly answer your question. That's why it's good to have a team. So my apologies.
Good evening. So, yes, we do, we have OSHA training that we do for all of our staffs. And there are other additional training because we have now an emergency manager who's on board, who's also supporting with some of the additional training for our teams around, like, if there are injuries that happen on, on, while they're on the work site, some of those additional trainings that we're doing. We also have been providing like PPE, additional PPE. So our, we reviewed our uniforms to make sure that when there are, our folks are working in the heat, that the uniforms are more conducive for them. We are also doing improvements also to our buildings too, to make sure that our folks are not being exposed during cold and heating periods. So there's a host of different things that we are doing, particularly around exposure to both heating and cooling periods.
Got you. No, I appreciate the answer. I just wanted to take this moment to uplift the heat stress standards that's been in place by the, by the state and just make sure we're doing the best we can to follow those. So thank you. And also just make sure that those practices are being articulated down through the principals and the staff and then, you know, everyone else to, to make sure it impacts the workers, make sure the workers are protected. So, thank you. And for my, my second question is in regards to deferred maintenance. Just curious on what does that look like today regarding deferred maintenance? How much is invested, you know, each year versus how much we need and to invest and whether or not we're getting ourselves out of a hole or kind of just laying it and digging a bigger hole? Just wondering what that projections look like when it comes to facilities?
So I will say that Baltimore City Public Schools is the same as I, I look, I see agencies when they do their presentations for their capital investments. We don't have enough for the infrastructure that we have. So we don't have enough resources to support the infrastructure that we have. But I will say and commend that the board, the school board, has been doing significant work over the last seven plus to nine years in investing in some of our preventative maintenance work. So our facility maintenance budget had gone up by $3 million every year over a nine-year period of time to support some of the deferred maintenance. But, again, when your capital budget, so our capital budget is probably less than a third of what it should be in order for us to dig our way out of deferred maintenance. So we're not there, but we have significant investment that is happening in city schools by our leadership, Dr. Santelisas and the board, investing in maintenance.
And the reason why I bring it up, and I'll, like every other agency, I'll challenge you with the same challenge I gave them, let's start looking at things differently, right? Let's figure out what can we do? How can we look at this issue a little differently besides kicking the can down the road? Because when I look at our water system and I look at like the descent decree that we're in and how it's so heavily burdened people right now, it's because the, the maintenance wasn't there, you know, we waited until we had no other choice but to make the investment. And then it becomes a dire, you know, a, a situation for the people currently living in it. So I would say let's just use this moment to kind of figure out how we might can do things differently besides say we don't have enough money, because the time will come where we have to spend the money in order to upgrade these facilities and rather being forced to do it, let's make the tough decisions now.
And, and Councilman, if I may, I just want to highlight that city schools is one of the largest recipients of the city's increased geo-borrowing, where their annual geo-borrowing allocation is going from $19 million to $27.5 million, which that's one of the fastest increases when we look at where we're putting additional capital dollars to different types of city facilities and infrastructure. And that is on top of the city's support for the 21st Century Schools Initiative, which is still on way, is still underway, that we're continuing to invest in, that was really focused on modernizing infrastructure for city schools.
And one of the things I just wanted to add is that I appreciate the, the comment about us doing things differently, because I believe that that's one of the things that we have been doing, right? So when we receive the funding, the additional money that was going towards our general funds to support facilities, we have been putting it in preventative maintenance, which is before, we didn't use the money towards preventative maintenance, it was very much reactionary. And so one of the things that we saw improvements on in the state assessments of our buildings, we have been seeing significant improvements in the conditions of our buildings because of how we've been using the funds, a little bit more depending on relying on technology and increasing our staff in very strategic ways in order to support our facility infrastructure.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Blanchard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Santelisas and your team for, for coming tonight. Three questions you can, I wouldn't be surprised if you could predict what I was going to ask. But, so I want to hear basically plans for next school year, improvements and enhancements in middle school sports and vocational training, as well as an update on how the school-based violence intervention program and, shucks, I'm blanking on, the, the before and after school, the safe passage. So how that, how that has impacted students and schools and performance and whatnot. So maybe to start with how middle school sports is going?
Sure. So, and while I answer the, begin answering the middle school sports, I'll ask Chief Place Tozay and Sonya Goodwin to get ready for your other questions, if that's okay. So middle school sports is actually going really well. We have partnered with the mayor and deputy mayor, J.D. Merrill is also here, and really have worked with our athletics office, our operations office, you know, with regards to transportation, we, that was a juggernaut for us for the reasons we talked about earlier, sorry, I'll move a little to this, that we talked about earlier. But we do have an outside vendor who will continue to support our middle school athletics so that our students can actually have, you know, interscholastic play, right? They're not just doing it with their classmates. So we're very excited about that. That was a hitch. We're also excited about the mayor's commitment through Wreckin' Parks to make sure that we're expanding some of the offerings and what we are seeing at a school-based level. And I think both our finance office with some of those budget collaboratives that we referenced earlier, as well as the school's office, it's a question now, right? So as part of the budgeting process, there's certain allotments that schools give to athletics on a per pupil basis. And so what we're seeing is the expansion of offerings at the school level. So making sure that there are sports for both boys and girls, making sure that the offerings are there. Our athletics division under Executive Director Goodwin has done a really good job also of mapping some of those offerings that actually can continue at the high school level, right? So making sure that if we have high school bocce, that we also have middle school bocce. And then also providing exploration through partnerships. So a lot is clearly, clearly there's a core that's facilitated by our central office, but there's also really great partnerships that are still expanding for things like golf that might be one or two schools. But what we're really working towards is having kind of a core that helps with the trajectory of early exposure in middle, so that it will also feed our high school athletics, where, as you noticed in the presentation, we're also continuing to make investments. And just want to continue to shout out, they didn't ask me for this, but I'm going to say it anyway, you know, our partners at Under Armour, who really supported the initial analysis. The deputy mayor, Merrill, also helped to spearhead, that really allowed us to say what is feasible for city schools in terms of maintaining. I'm really thrilled with it, and I think that helping to resolve the transportation issue...
Can you clarify, what was the, what was the analysis?
I'm sorry. Under Armour helped us do an analysis of kind of where we were with middle school sports, what that would look like kind of across the districts. It's pretty much like an environmental survey on kind of where we were with athletics in, in city schools. So they continued, they supported that because, frankly, they saw it as connected to their investment in high school sports. So a lot of the training of our coaches that they do, the, the uniform piece that I know you know well, that, again, holds for both boys and girls sports teams and for every sport. And they continue to do that. Like I saw the unveiling of some new uniforms, like earlier this year, and I went, wait, we're getting more new uniforms? And then just the social emotional leadership pieces of athletics. But, but the middle school sports is still heavy emphasis on exploration, on exposure. And, again, even in our budget collaboratives, we're seeing more schools coming on board with using that allotment to begin to stand up programming. And, and I'll be honest, it's a great, it's one of the things I enjoy most, is like watching, the, the mayor and I talked about the other day, but the, like, the cross-country races for girls. And I, that example stands out for me because I remember in our first meet, that was about 14 schools, a couple of years ago, I literally got a chance, and I wish I could remember his name, but to, to remember a community member who had raced, you know, had, had helped girls go at the collegiate level and train at the Olympic level. And he was there, and he actually had watery eyes, he might not admit to that now, but he had watery eyes, and he said, I have never seen this kind of investment. I have never seen this many girls at this age in middle school, all out here, from, from everywhere, from Collington Square to, you know, Hampstead Hill, like kids running all over the city. And he said, our girls don't have enough of this. And this, I never thought I would see this in Baltimore City. So, you know, my late father would actually be getting a chuckle that his daughter, who was not an athlete, minus the dancing, is, is one of the biggest advocates of middle school sports. It is important, and we're committed to it, and I'm glad that you and the council recognize the importance of it.
Would, do we have the data available to see, like, F school year '24 through '26 of like over these three years? You know, the, the number of schools offering the sport as well as like participation by sport across city schools?
Yeah, and we can, oh, sorry, go ahead. No, no, and, and we can get that for you. I think we should, we should put it, you know, kind of in table form where we can get it to you in the council and it's kind of easy tracking year over year, but we do have the data.
That'd be great. Could we make that a, so for a committee request, could we have that in two weeks?
Yeah, I, I think that's reasonable, Sonya, is that reasonable?
Okay.
Yes, that's reasonable. Sonya, okay, great. And then on your other questions, I'm going to invite Chief Place Tozay and Executive Director Goodwin again on that. And then we have Chief Shorter with us as well. But go ahead, Executive Director Goodwin, you can begin.
And then, Madam Chair, I know I didn't say the words right there. Did we catch the committee request?
I caught it.
Okay.
They caught it. We caught it. We got it.
Thank you, Dr. Esch. You had the fun part with the athletics piece.
I did.
And you took all of the details.
I did, I did.
But I just wanted to also add our, our flag football, that we were able to have our in ARPA World Year, and that was fantastic to see all of the young ladies out there having the opportunity to be able to do something that we have not done here before. So that was amazing. But they're, they are encouraged to do this because of the middle school options, because we're building their confidence before they get to that high school level so that they can have the background information, you know, the skills so that they are able to excel. Now, you asked about safe passage, and when I get to that part, I'm going to ask our wonderful Chief Shorter to come on up. Okay. And, Chief Tozay, I'm sorry. And, but for the school-based violence intervention, yes, we are off to a great start with the mayor's office. We have our schools that have the community-based organizations that are currently in there. They are working to make sure that we have the Student Ambassador Program set up. They want to make sure that their student voice is something that is evident within the work that is being done. We're also making sure that the community-based organizations are taking a part in mentoring of the students and ensuring that the students have those positive role models to work with as they move through the years to build leadership. And these are some of the areas where we're also giving students the opportunity to have that voice, to, to let us know, like, what are some things that you're interested in? Some things that's going to help you to remain engaged? So we do have those listening sessions, we do have those opportunities to work with students and to hear them, to listen to them. And then not just to listen, but to actually put it into practice so that they can see that their voices are being heard. I'm going to bring my chief up here. So for safe passage, that's been a really strong example of coordinated partnership. We've been working with city agencies, school police, Dr. Brooks and her team, to strategically select schools based on community input, crime data, and ability to partner with credible community-based organizations. And this ensures that the resources are targeted where they're needed most. So far, we've seen improved attendance in these 12 schools, a decrease in the incidents around arrival and dismissal, dismissal, and also increased relationships with our young people and our families. So our leaders have consistently shared that safe passage is making a visible difference. And we're committed to growing and refining the program using the real-time data that we're getting. And I know Dr. Brooks and her team is committed to doing the same thing as well. Did you want to add? Good? Okay.
Awesome, thank you. And I, and I know that with both the, the ending of ARPA funding, ending of S funding, the, the threats to all sort of federal everything, that's a, these are, both of those programs are incredibly important and something that we, if, if, if there's a risk of not being able to, to fund it like we need to, particularly on the city side, I think it's extremely important that, you know, city schools make sure that, you know, both the mayor's office and the council, who does indeed pass the budget at the end of the day, is, is aware of, of that risk. So, and then the, yeah, and then last one, I was, I got the, the CTE discussion and everything and was really impressed by it a couple of months ago. And just curious to get maybe an overview on the vocational training side of changes over the, like, enhancements we expect to see next year.
And I, excuse me, thank you, Councilman. I think a couple of things. One, again, I don't know why the chief of staff and our line of sight is just not aligning. Sorry about that. I can do that to her. The, a couple of things. So one, the leadership that I referenced earlier, I think, is very tangible, that the council president and the mayor are bringing to the, basically the workforce development within the city. So I think one of the things was highlighted earlier, and that is kind of those ten, the tangible beginning around where are opportunities within Baltimore City to actually make sure that our young people have exposure and are, are, are having opportunity. I think the, the other place that we are expanding, and again, if Chief Dubrowski wants to add, she certainly can, but I think one of the things that you'll see is a continued expansion into middle school. So for years, we had kind of left, you know, the middle school was kind of, I don't want to say, i- it was just very low, like, there wasn't kind of a coordinated, focused attempt. And I would say with Executive Director Jefferson, Dr. Swinton Buck, the deputy CAO in particular, there's been... Dr. Swinton Buck, the deputy CAO in particular, there's been a real focus in beefing up the middle school exposure. I will say that, you know, Senator McCray has long been a real proponent of that early exposure, even when he was kind of doing it on his own. And I think now the system is at a place where we're recognizing the need for investment. The other piece that you will see, and admittedly, it is not as fast as we would like it. I mean, I look at the numbers and I'm like, how come we don't have more? And how come it's not faster? But I think the other piece you should see is increased apprenticeship opportunities. We have a real focus on it. It won't be at the level any of us want, but it has become a real system priority. And I think the partnership with the council and city hall is going to get us there further. I know that Chief Dobrowski has worked, we've actually added an additional position. Originally, we thought that apprenticeship placement could be combined, a position, and now we're realizing actually, and again, through Chief Dobrowski's kind of, I think, deep survey of, of, of where we needed to be stronger, are saying that that's not the case. So we've added an additional position there. So what I think you'll begin to see next year, excuse me, is some of those pieces taking deeper root, as well as one of the things, and we did this again for both the council president and the mayor, was to show not only where we currently have CTE programming, but the plans to expand it. And one of the biggest shifts in strategy for city schools, and you know, I've, I've said this to you, I think, before, but we will continue this shift away from, we only have career tech centers, right? We love Mervau, we love Carver, but the reality is, our young people who want access to family sustaining career pipelines are in all sections of the city. And so the continued build-out in places, for example, like Patterson, are part of why we see more of our multilingual learner, high school students actually staying in their neighborhood around Patterson, because now we actually have the programming at Patterson, where they might have been previously less likely to cross town, to go someplace else. And so part of what we're doing is building that out. The same is true for Ben Franklin. Same is true at some places within Edmondson. So we really have a different strategy now, and have shifted away from like, two or three high schools, that's enough. And really, now the name of the game is, we have to have access for young people all across the city, not just in a few places. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. And I, I think the, the point about looking at middle school as well, and just how that, it's not, it's not just about getting these kids prepared for these jobs, but this is the type of stuff that, like sports and the arts, keeps kids excited to come to school in general and perform better in general. My last point on the vocational training, you know, I think that, that some of it's particularly tricky about that is like, it's, a lot of what needs to be brought in is, is not things that city schools can, can do on its own, right? It's not just a money thing. And needing to have good relationships with, with industry partners and all those, right, with the unions and all those types of things. And I think that's somewhere where, you know, the elects can be more helpful than meddlesome, ideally.
No, and, and I will just repeat what I have said previously, this is not new, that, and I'm not just saying it for hype factor. I really truly believe there has not been a time, in a long, long time, like we have now, where we have agreement at the state level, we have agreement at the council level, in the mayor's office, within city schools, and increasingly, industry partners. I think that this is kind of a, it's a governor's priority. And, you know, there, there's a word in the Greek, Kairos, which means the ripening of time, meaning like, the time has come. And I actually think this is a Kairos moment to really accelerate this now in ways that, you know, you know, Vice President Middleton has been talking about from the time I was a CAO. But I don't think we have seen a time now, and it's why one of the promises I made to both the council president and the mayor was that this last year, I can't do everything, but I have promised that we will work together to make sure we are on strong footing around this career component, because it, it is, the time is now to do this.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Santelisas. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Let me expand on that just a little bit. So one of the unique opportunities, I would say from the industry partner side, we're seeing more and more, especially in West Baltimore, where we're seeing the tunnel coming, right? We're seeing those partners come in and talk to our young people about what does it mean to be engineers? What does it mean to be a conductor on a train? What does it mean to work on water hydraulics? Things that we know impact Maryland tremendously. So we're seeing these industry partners helping to expand our reach, accelerate that opportunity. Career and technical education is probably one of the most important things I'm personally passionate about, but really does mean the world to our young people from an early exposure standpoint. And we recognize here in city schools, we can't do that all on our own. We do need the partnership from the city, we need the partnership from city council, but we need our industry partners to step up and provide those career talks, but those opportunities for our young people to have those apprenticeships. So we're seeing that more and more and more every single day. A lot more to do at the middle school level. You know, if I even go back, like 20 years ago in my career, when I was teaching middle school, you know, we, we struggled to get the partners inside of, you know, my school at Booker T where I taught, even though we're right in the ripe landscape of a lot of different industries, from higher education to the state, to UPS in that neighborhood. But we're seeing that be a part of ways in which our corporate partners are stepping up. And so we're appreciative of that. But we've got more to do. I, I would say here in city schools, we're outpacing a lot of our peers here in the state on the career tech side, but we know that, you know, those investments that we see on the federal level are going to mean a lot, state level and the city level, to make sure that our young people are prepared for the careers of today and tomorrow. So.
Awesome, thank you.
Council President Cohen?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you again, Dr. S. Councilman, to your well-made point and to Dr. Santelisas's reply, I do believe this is the moment. And the reality is that Baltimore is going to be building a lot in the next 10 years, whether that's the mayor's vacant housing plan, whether that's the Amtrak Tunnel in West Baltimore, whether that's the Key Bridge, and on and on and on. And the reality, and this is what the mayor and I said to Dr. Santelisas, is that in some ways, as a city, we have under-indexed for the trades. Jermaine Jones knows this better than just about anyone. We do not have the workforce to fill those jobs. So what are we gonna do? We're gonna import a whole bunch of people from a whole bunch of other cities and states, and we're gonna rebuild Baltimore for Baltimore, but not by Baltimore. And that would be a tremendous miss. And so I've really appreciated Dr. Santelisas, in her ninth inning, saying, you know what, I hear you loud and clear, this needs to be a priority. We got to get the career piece right. In some ways, all of us, particularly in the education reform movement, have over-indexed for college readiness. And the piece about CTE, about career, is critically important. And, and, you know, and our mayor knows this, he went to Mervau, he talks a lot about his formative education there. But making sure these pathways are fully aligned, so that we're not sending kids into careers that aren't going to exist in a couple of years, is extremely important. Thank you also, Councilman, for your point about middle school sports. That's actually an area where my predecessor did some really good work, Council President Mosby, both when he was in Annapolis and then in leading this chamber. But appreciate you picking up that mantle as well. Dr. S, I know it is getting late, I see the faces, so I don't want to hold people too much longer, but did want to talk about community schools. It's an area where Baltimore has been leading for a very long time. I really appreciated, and you lifted this up during the last legislative session, when there was a lot of conversation about cutting the concentrations of poverty grant out of the Kerwin formula to fill the state's budget deficit. You were really clear, and this council was really clear, we're not going to do that. That would disproportionately harm children in Baltimore, children with special needs, so on and so forth. And really appreciated that partnership, the leadership of Councilman Bullock and many other folks in this chamber, and was thrilled when, in the end, they did not cut concentrations of poverty, community schools, et cetera. I want to understand, from a district level, we know that this is a strategy that works when we work it effectively. We've seen it in some of our highest performing schools in Baltimore. The community school coordinator is a key asset, and that they're able to leverage all sorts of community programs, and support for language learners and their parents, and food access in some cases. But what are you saying from North Ave to both your administrative staff, and then to principals, about how to do this effectively? Because one of the concerns I've had about it is that there is a gap in quality. There is, there has been historically a lack of quality control over what it looks like to be an effective community school coordinator. And so what are we saying to kind of close the gaps and make sure it's not just a couple of wonderful proof points that we can all name off the top of our tongue, but it's distributed across the city?
Yeah, no, and it's a, it's a great question. I'm going to invite Chief High Cupboard up to really get to the quality question, because she has prioritized this over the last past number of years. I will also say this, to your point, Council President, and I think, again, a point of pride for our city. We know we have a long way to go. We know it's not perfect. But this council should feel proud that when there was testimony going on and deliberation in this past legislative session in Annapolis, there were questions about the impact of community schools. And Baltimore City, that's right, Baltimore City, was held up as an example for the rest of the state. And I think a lot of that is due to, one, our early commitment that began when Chief High Cupboard was not chief, but she was commissioner on the board. And I think a lot of that is because, frankly, she made key leadership decisions prior to expansion, to say, we've got to go deep on quality. And not only are those paying off, but the rest of the state is, is frankly following our lead. So Chief High Cupboard?
I'll just add to the brag for one moment, that Dr. Santelisas and I went to the state board to present about our community school strategy. We got a standing ovation from the state board, which was quite remarkable. And so I would just want to remind folks, the genesis of our community school strategy in Baltimore actually started with lead agencies sponsoring community schools at our schools. When the funding came in, we wanted to honor that legacy, because they also fought with us alongside us for the funding in Annapolis to have community schools, right? So we have 13 lead agencies that also sponsor community schools, and we grant funds out to those lead agencies. Several of them, you know, United Way, the YMCA, Central Maryland, Child First, et cetera, Elevate, and they are providing community school supports and leadership in many of our schools. The schools had an option to choose whether they'd be with a lead agency, or to be with city schools as their technical lead agency. So we run directly about 68 community schools, and the other ones are granted funds out through CPG, through lead agencies. That being said, we have had, as you know, in the past, sort of a bifurcated strategy of how we then track progress. We actually recently did a research study with AIR, where they looked across the country at best practices around how to, sorry, evaluate community school strategy. And they came back with some fantastic outline. Of course, they also wanted a million-dollar contract to continue the evaluation work. What we've decided to do, though, is to put in place a data dashboard, which then all of our community schools partners will then be feeding into that dashboard, not just the outputs, because we know we've leveraged $15 million in partnerships and money into our community schools. It's amazing, but to what end? How are our kids better? How are our schools better off because of it? And so this data dashboard is going to get us at the end of the next school year, more data on the impact of community schools, not just the outputs for community schools. We've also been leveraging stronger training in partnership with the family league, who was mentioned earlier. We offer quarterly training, not just for our community schools coordinators, but for all of them. We also working closely with Chief Jose and her team to make sure that principals understand what quality looks like, what the expectations are. Let's be clear about one thing, the community school coordinators all report to my office. That was strategic, because we wanted to make sure that the standard of quality limited across city schools was similar across all schools. So while the principals are a close partner and a day-to-day manager of those community school coordinators, they all report into my office, so that my team, led by Holly Gonzalez and Sheila Drummond, who are the books and they're the OGs of community schools, can strongly provide good professional development, coaching, training, and navigation of the community school strategy.
That's good to hear. I'll just say, you know, I, I know in the past, it has at times felt like community school coordinators were lost, in terms of what the North Star is, what you're supposed to be doing, and sort of what it means to move the needle for kids and families. And so as we enter into this moment where every school is a community school, and where we actually have the right supports to make it work, I think just nailing that quality control piece, and having a clear set of criteria by which we evaluate, is extremely important. Thank you, Chief, and Madam CEO, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Gray?
Thank you. This isn't a, this is a softball question, but I really think, I've received this from a viewer who was just watching TV and watching the hearings. And I really think it's really important sometimes to answer things in real, in real time, to kind of clear up any type of confusion. And so this is about absenteeism, chronic absenteeism, and the 10% rule. And the parent said that it was difficult, and it's really a hardship on the school to receive failing grades for attendance when the policy is a 10%, which means, I guess, every quarter, they can miss five days, or a month, they can miss two days of school before technically they're, they're, they're marked as chronically absent. Not factoring in the fact that a kid could be sick, especially during the wintertime. So I guess, fact, I guess with that being said, do you guys foresee changing that type of policy? I know that other jurisdictions around us, everyone pretty much has as a standard, the 10%. But how do you see, one, if it's a real possibility to change that? And then, two, what do you think about that affecting the schools' overall grade, when we know that sometimes it's difficult, as we talked about earlier, with kids even getting to school depending on bus and all these other mitigated factors outside of their control? You're also being punished as a school for basically the product of what's around you.
No, and, well, I don't know if it's totally a softball question, but I do appreciate the question, because as the council has shown in all, in a number of the questions tonight, including this one, there really is an acknowledgement that being in school is the first step to being proficient, to being career and college ready, and we need to do that. Chief Placed Jose may want to discuss the actual policy itself around that. What I, what I will say is this, that the state superintendent has been very attuned to this issue when it comes to absentee rates and the state report card. Also, Hedy Chang, who heads up the, the kind of nationally recognized, you know, attendance works and does a lot of that research, even in her report to the state board around chronic absenteeism, acknowledged a lot of what you were discussing now, when, when she was referencing unexcused absences, and what actually does that mean. I will say here, publicly admit that after Hedy did her analysis on the one or two days where my own child would stay home, and I'd be like, ah, you don't need a note, just go back to school, I realized that's counted as an unexcused absence, right, which contributes to, right, how we record. So I do think that there, there, there is room for that. But my bottom line is that, you know, that I'd want to leave you with, is state superintendent Carrie Wright has been very open to hearing from LEA leaders, other superintendents across the state, about kind of the fairness of the way that chronic absentee rates are included in a school's report card. And I do know, you know, we're still awaiting what the new formula will be, but she has definitely signaled to district leaders that she's moving definitely signaled to district leaders that she's moving much closer to more of the grade being actual like student growth and student achievement and, to your point, less about what schools might have less control over. I, I will though say, as an accountability person, the fact that attendance rates matter has helped to keep a level of urgency at the school level. It has helped to make sure that school leaders know we're all responsible for it. But to your point, that shift in how we're graded, I think is not just a Baltimore City issue, it's actually a state issue, and it's one that I know she's attending to. Does that answer that part of your question?
No, that, that does. And I just want to just highlight, I, I think when we are moving off of a grade, it's eerily similar to the tough on crime in 1995, in the mid 90s, when we were turned around and saying, well, the stats say this, so we have to get tough on people. And I understand we have to hold people accountable, but at the same time, I don't think we also should be punishing the school and then vis a vis pushing that down onto a parent who's trying their best, doing everything they can, but two days out of a month just seems like a lot. And this is for a kid who like, I won like Jeffrey dollars at James Moser for never missing a day of school. And so my dad always made, and I lived across the street from the school, so I had no excuse, right? But, but I understand that like, not everyone lives three steps away from the school. And if I lived at the top of Papa Grove instead of right there on Moser Street, I may have missed two days or three days. And so we shouldn't punish that child and then the school shouldn't receive a failing grade based off of circumstantial situations. And so I'm glad they asked that and I just wanted to highlight that and something that the state superintendent should consider.
Understood. Thank you.
Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Santalisis. As a former student who was in special education for a short time, because my dyslexia was discovered in 11th grade, I am worried because of the shifts that have happened at the state level in terms of separate public day schools and how they're shifting the funding onto local LEAs. So I just want to know, how are you guys preparing for it? Because I know that the conversations are hard, especially with young people who have IEPs. If your district can't support it and it's a new separate public day school, that's a higher cost and a higher cost of care. So how do we help you with that situation?
No, it's a, it's a great question. I'm going to ask Chief Tabrowski if she would come up and also assist with this response. I will say, and I'm sure you remember from your city schools days, that one of the major kind of pushes we still have is, is helping to reduce the number of families who feel as if a separate public day school is the only way their young person can receive service. So that work, which I know you know, right, began a number of years ago. I think one of the things that we've been focused on as well, and frankly, we've had discussions with the board about, is the placement of where young people can receive services geographically and what that means in a school system of choice. Because you're less likely, if you can go to any school, right? So if you say you can go to any school you want, but that school does not have the services that you need, you're, you're less likely to get quality services in that place. Yes, we want it to all be the same quality, but we know that when you can go to whatever school you want regardless, the ability to provide the equal level of service for that disability is a big one. So I think one of the ways that we're preparing is making sure that we actually are locating our services and prioritizing, making sure geographically we have those services in each quadrant of the city, rather than saying to a student, you know, you can go anywhere and then we'll try to patch together, right, those services. That being said, I think the actual preparation for, for the, for the shift is one that we have been addressing as part of our need to make sure that the Special Education Office that really attends, is used to attending to the compliance piece. I think Lori Lynn Sutton is bringing a lot of collaboration with our Teaching and Learning Office to make sure that actually it's a partnership and that children are receiving services in ways that are the most efficient, that are the most impactful, and that allow the least, least amount of movement. We have seen the decline actually in out-of-district placements over the past few years, which I think also bodes well for the shift. Where it will actually land as we prepare for the shift, I don't think we know yet. We'll know, you know, in a couple of years. But I do think that the preparation and the shifts in where we are prioritizing, the placement of services and the availability of services is, is, is helpful in that way. So that, that's what I would say for right now.
Thank you. Because I already, we know special education is driven by instruction. One of the things I have questions about, and this is near and dear to me, because as a parent who has a child who is in kindergarten, who would now be in first grade, who has been a district staff person, I know middle school is where we struggle. So I just want to grasp why we reduce the amount of math instruction daily from 90 minutes to 45 minutes, given that our scores have not gone up or seen as much progress as we've had in elementary. I say that because I love our children, but I know that the hardest place to find a certified teacher is middle school. And the quality of teaching that we need for middle school, bless us, because I love my little person. He knows he's forced to learn in elementary school, but middle school, you get a choice and hormones change things. I just want to know why did we make that instructional change? And then what are we doing to provide those support? Because I'm a math lover, but I know that if we're going to see any type of gains, we got to bite down on it and the fact that we made a substantial investment in the curriculum.
No, it's a great question. Chief Tabrowski, you might want to add to this. I will say this, though, as she comes, that one of the, and I know you know this, but I'll just kind of state it, is that also as a former middle school educator and middle school head, what I will say is that there's, there's a rub, right? There's the rub of, do you give more time before you know that that time is going to be well-used? And then the rub with there are other content areas that middle school kids need, right? So in second grade, it's a lot easier to double down with, you know, 90-minute periods. Again, I will say, the research is pretty clear, you can double the time, but if you don't have the quality understanding of how to use that time, it doesn't make that big of a difference. But, but in middle school, we also were finding young people were not getting world language in city schools. We were finding that science was short-changed. And if you look at our science performance, right, we've got a ways to go with that, too. So I think the frame, what I just want to frame for the, for the council and the public is, there is this tension. I think your, you know, your question's well stated, but there, there is also just going to be this tension between when we double up on time in one area, we take time away. And what we did know is that our, our middle school young people, very much like our upper elementary school young people, were frankly suffering from not having those, that other content. We were doubling down on literacy, doubling down on math, and our kids were arriving without history, without science, without world language. And a lot of that was being practically squeezed out, even if the schedule said, yes, they have it. So it's a tension. It doesn't mean we can't do it. It doesn't mean we're not wrestling with it. But I do think that that's, that's an, that's an important framing for the time block there. Joan, did you want to?
Yep, no, thank you. And thank you for the question. It's an important one. So I think as we've been looking at our middle grade schedules, a lot of it, Dr. Santalisis, I just want to plus one that piece of a real deliberate commitment to ensure that our middle grade students have the science, social studies time as well. That being said, we also have been putting out guidance for the number of minutes. And for middle grades mathematics, it's supposed to be 55 minutes. And we know that some schools have challenges to try to fit their things in, and so we started to see variation. So we've been putting together some scheduling work groups and strategic scheduling, professional development to help our principals, because scheduling is a huge task. It's very complex. The other piece in the middle school, as we're bringing on new mathematics materials this fall in all of our schools, is repurposing three of our, what we call our advisory or personalized learning blocks. We're looking to use some time differently, three times across, so that we can get both that 55-minute block, but then three other 30 minutes. Because I think to Dr. Santalisis's point is, when you do a straight 90 minutes, we can sometimes get into a fatigue versus if we have the 55 minutes of instruction plus a 30-minute, three times a week piece.
I asked this question because I noticed the scores and like, we've seen growth, but I just wanted to make sure because I benefited from the extra, the 90-minute block. But I also recognize that we do need world language. I, I remember in middle school, I had African-American Studies at Dunbar Middle School, but I also had algebra, algebra II, and then that prepared me for calculus in high school. But I just want to make sure because I'm just going to be transparent. When we look at, when we say successful districts, there are some districts that we call successful that still haven't broached the 50% proficient rate to be relative. But I also know that I have a, I have a fifth, I have a five, well, now six-year-old who's in GAW, and just yesterday surprised me when he put 80 plus 20, 80 plus 20 is 100, is 100. I was like, where'd you learn that from? But it is the, I'm always fearful because middle school is where the rub is, and then we see scores tank. And I see kids leaving elementary school on grade level and then middle school just goes down. And I just want to make sure that we're not losing sight of it, especially since the very substantial investment we made in curriculum. I like nice workbooks, I like nice things, but I just want to make sure those things are being used for our young people. And because immediately I question, if it requires 90 minutes of instruction, how are we adapting to get down to the 45 or 55 minutes? Because to the general public, it's like, we're cutting our curriculum in half. How are you going to get through the entire scope and sequence by the end of the school year if it's cut in half? For my next question, sorry, I lost track. So I want to go back to Chairman Conway's bill about Torrance. As a person who helped draft the attendance policy, I'm still a little torn that at the chronic, at the actual hearing, there was no type of agreement to have common metrics because we've had vendors, as we've seen from the Baltimore Sun reporting, and then questions about it. I just want to know, how are we ensuring proper data governance? Because $100,000 was a major investment into a study. I know attendance works and others have done all types of studies about attendance. I just, in the lane of knowing that we are constrained with financial, financially now, I just want to make sure that when we capture this data, it's usable and we not spending millions of dollars chasing a goal that we didn't actually provide the foundation for data to actually inform us.
No, and, and thank you for the question. I think one of the things that you rightly note is, we have to make sure that the data we're using is actually going to give us the information we want and be set initially at the beginning for us to actually be able to track the data. I think the, the encouraging kind of news or response to your question is that I do think the collaboration across different agencies, working with the state on this, is allowing us to hone in on what those attendance metrics need to be and what they, what they look like. The, the reality is that the state, the state signals a lot of that. The state is the holder of what we report, but what we have found in our on-the-ground work around attendance that I think is helping to move, move the dial, is being able to identify which data is actually our schools finding the most useful. And a lot of the data that the schools are finding most useful, and I know, I think Dr. Wu might still be here, but her team, the continuous improvement team, is the team that actually led a lot of the school-based work around how schools change their behaviors, the behaviors of adults in response. And so part of what our emphasis has been on is, yes, monitoring, whatever the state is monitoring, but it's actually that real-time data that principals have said to us that they and their teams are finding the most useful when it's kind of ground level, how do we get kids back? And how do we make sure kids are in school? So I wouldn't disagree that there's a need to have, you know, some kind of coalescing around what is the best data. And I think that's part of what the state superintendent is doing as part of her data review, both academic as well as data-like attendance. And we'll see the direction they go in. I think the stance we've taken is, we're actually not waiting for that decision to be made. We are looking at, again, the data that principals have told us is the most useful in actually making sure more kids are at school more often. And that data can sometimes look very different. So I don't disagree that we need to track it and we will, just that, you know, as Dr. Durant would say, more than one thing can be true. And that other thing for us is actually having practical data that the state may not look at, might not be trackable across jurisdictions, but it definitely is helping to move the data with young people.
Thank you, Dr. Dr. Santalisis. And I just want to highlight, I appreciate the conversation about school choice. As someone who attended Carver Road Tech, who had opportunities in City College and Poly, I chose Carver because it was one of the original African-American schools in Baltimore City. But I recognize that in our, and I'm just going to put out the comment, some of us who in, in this city believe that you can only go to three schools and have a quality education, and I'm going to preach this again because I, I sat in the graduation two years ago at ACE where 10 of those young people got full rides to Johns Hopkins. I've seen young people from other schools get into Yale and Princeton. I think that we need to have a public service campaign about getting past the internalized racism that's associated with our three top-tier schools. Because as my grandmother, when my grandmother was walking me through my own school choice decision, she reminded me that her college residency school was parlor in Dunbar, right? And she had a choice after Dunbar to go to Towson University, but she would have been in a class that was the third class allowed black women into the actual school. Or my uncle who attended City College when they allowed black men in. I think about, we need to really have a strong conversation about school choice and how some of those choices are deeply rooted in internalized racism, but also social, social disparities. As someone who grew up in public housing, I firmly believe that we should review school choice in a way that allows young people like me to know that my zip code does not determine my success or the school that I get in. Because when I look at the data anyway, there are young people from my old zip code who still don't get in City and Poly. And when you look at the data in terms of concentration of poverty, that fact is still true. And I think that we really need to think about how do we move these programs across the city so that young people don't have to make the choice, do I leave from South Baltimore to go to City and it takes me two and a half hours on bus? Because I'm not, as most Baltimoreans, we call MTA Mark Tony Anthony. We know Mark Tony Anthony is not always going to be on time and you're not going to be on school, school on time. But I want to say, in your final year, what can we do to begin that conversation? Because I think that that is a deeply rooted work that has to start and those uncomfortable conversations need to happen now.
No, I, I don't disagree. And I, but I would hearken back to, just as- And I, but I would hearken back to, just as you did, our earlier conversation around school choice. Because I think even in, you know, your reflection and question, you yourself were giving similar examples that I would give around the different choices that our young people are now making around high school. So for example, we are seeing now that the same Latino students who advocated that there needed to be more spaces for them at City College, if you now look at the numbers, a lot of those young people are now staying in their neighborhood and a lot of them are going to places like Patterson and Ben Franklin. And part of why they are going is because you can go to Patterson High School and you can have advanced placement classes. You can go to Patterson High School and be part of an orchestra. You can go to Patterson High School and have Princeton, Harvard, Wellesley, and UVA come to your school for college night. And what was interesting about that night, because I went as a parent, was watching all of the Poly and City parents have to cross town to come to Patterson to hear from those schools. So I think we have that. I think your example of ACE is one that I use all the time. If you want to see young people that are getting into Hopkins full ride, every single year, ACE has students who get that. But part of why that is true is because you had a teacher and a principal. And that teacher happens to be this year's City Schools Teacher of the Year, who said, we need to have AP Calculus at ACE. At, because you, you're not getting into a Hopkins, sorry. I mean, I know people want to say everybody can go. The reality is you can't get into a competitive science program unless you've had AP Calculus. Teacher Lou understood that and he made sure that there's AP Calculus at ACE. So I think one of the ways we have the discussion is similar to what Chair McCray was referencing earlier. And that is making sure that the program, the opportunities are there and young people actually see the difference. I spoke to an age young person who is the second in his family and he lives in North Baltimore. And he said, my sister went here and went to Duke. He's got a full ride to University of Michigan and he doesn't think there's any other place in the city to go to school. And I think that's part of why the mayor is very proud, like you are, of your alma mater. So I actually think that one of the best anecdotes that I have seen from families is when they see the results of what their young people are doing, the choices change. The demographics of those schools change. And that one of the best anecdotes, in my opinion, to internalized racism is actually having the opportunity to show that you know what you're doing, regardless of what somebody else believes about you. And frankly, that is what got generations of a lot of our forefathers, whether we came as immigrants, whether we are, by the way, I'm going to continue to use your like, you know, legacy families, right? I, I think that is the anecdote. And so while I'm fine having the conversation, what young people are telling us is we actually won't cross town and take two hours to get somewhere if we feel like we have a credible option in our neighborhood. And again, I love the example of a lot of our Latino students at Patterson, who are like, I can pretty much get that same thing here. So I actually don't need to cross, across town to do that. So again, that's my anecdote. It has been my anecdote, you know, and you know as well as I do because we've had these conversations in this chamber and out. I actually think excellence and opportunity are a better anecdote to that than a hundred hours of therapy. And I can say that now because I'm getting ready to leave and I don't really care who disagrees or agrees with me. You can sit in a therapist's chair for fifty hours and still not have that dislodged from you, but you know what does? You know what does actually have you counter that? Is when you're a robotics team that's the best in the world, when your debate team actually can play second nationally. What, what, when you know that one quarter of your dance graduates are part of, at one time, were part of Alvin Ailey Dance Company. All of those things help you counter whatever internalized anything you have, be it racism, sexism, or anything else. I won't relinquish that. It's the beauty of being fifty-seven. Again, I don't have time and I don't think our kids have time to sit. And I love therapy. There's nothing wrong with therapy. But you're not going to get two hundred hours of therapy to do what actually being successful and being the best does for you. It's why I'm sitting here. It's why some of you will be happy that I go. Because I, I know who I am and I know what I bring to the table and I got receipts. It doesn't mean we're all the way there. That's what I want for our young people. I want them to walk into any room regardless of who is there. And I've told my three daughters and I've told kids I've taught, I don't care if you go into a room and nobody looks like you. You still have what it takes to be there. It's why I got through three Ivy League schools. I wasn't looking that everybody had to look like me. I knew I could bring it. And that's what our young people deserve. So that's my anecdote. I'm sure you and the board will pick someone who will have their own approach that is mine. It has been mine. It will continue to be mine. And hey, we got us where we did, but the next person will do that. So I don't disagree with you, but I, I have seen what it looks like when a young person focuses on developing their talents and leading. And, and I still think historically, there is more evidence that that actually leads a people more than any kind of fixation on what the structural impediments are. That's our job. Young people need to focus on developing their talents and gifts. So that's what I believe. And since it's the last time I might be in here, figured I would say it anyway.
I appreciate the response and I concur as someone who was outside of the Poly and City kids, one of the first people to get in Hopkins myself and turned it down. Because once I knew I got in Hopkins, I can go anywhere else and be, compete. But I appreciate you and to the board, I think we need to do a real strong marketing campaign around this because people don't know the stories of those young people who are succeeding in other schools. Until we start marketing it, people won't believe it as well. I think the proof is in the pudding in having those, those storytelling sessions.
Dr. Santelisis, I love the way that, I love what you just said. I love the way she closed us out. Thank you too. Thank you. And thank you to your team. We are in recess.